After this regular meeting, okay? So would we please start? I guess there it's on. Please re- please join Councilmember Stipp in the pledge allegiance and stay standing for the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, though, for coming to ask.
Gracious God, from whom all good proceeds, grant us your humble servants, your holy inspiration, that we may set our minds on things that are right and by your merciful guiding us accomplish them. Please praise and we praise and thank you, oh Lord, that you have made yourself known to us. Lead us now in lives of service and obedience to your will. Be with our public servants and our servicemen and women here and abroad. Protect them and their and their families as they serve your people. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Stipp. We are all here at the diocese tonight, so let's start. We have one communication and Fire Chief Paul Luizy will present an overview of the Camp Fires Program, which was held the week of March 9th, 2015. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I just wanted to give a quick overview, and I also have a video that we can play as well, to talk a little bit about our Camp Fires Program that we had in March. Really, it was done in an effort to build and strengthen our diverse workforce for the future. We have developed the camp for young women ages 14 to 18, which will allow them to experience the life of a firefighter. So they we had them in for a week in March, starting March 9th, and they trained alongside our female and male firefighters. They were trained in physical fitness, functional movements for firefighters' job, team-building exercises, confidence building, and also all of them became CPR certified. The camp ran from 8:00 to 12:00 each day, and we had a family night on that Friday night, which we had the mayor and Winnet Riedes, our guest speakers. Really, we're the only other fire department in Arizona. There's one other in Tucson, just outside the Tucson area, in Northwest Fire District, that has been doing this type of a camp, but we're the only fire department in the valley that's been doing this type of a camp for young women. Really, the main goal of the camp is to help young women realize that they can do this job, just like the five women that currently work for our fire department as firefighters. So tonight, I've invited firefighter Laura Davis, who was project lead for this camp, and also Captain Hugo Bedoya, who's the project manager here, as well as our campers. And three of them were able to attend tonight out of the sixth that came to the program. So I'll have Gabby, Jessica, and Haley stand, along with Laura and Captain Bedoya. They're out there somewhere.
Why don't we just have, if you don't mind, just come on up and stand up here with the council. It was such an outstanding program, and they were so good at what they did. So let's let the public see them. We can't see you back there on the camera, and you deserve that. So come on right up here, just kind of stay in this corner up here, and look proud.
So tonight, just an overview of the week-long camp that we had, and as well as the video that's playing on for us right now, kind of shows some of the tasks and adventures that they went through during their week. But all in all, very successful camp. We're very proud of the work that our firefighters put in to kind of design this camp from a vision to bring it to fruition. So great work by Laura and by Captain Bedoya in getting that done, but also great work by the girls, being courageous enough and confident enough to come out and join us for that week, and hopefully we'll get to see them in the future as future employees.
Well, I happened to be there, and under observation you were, and I was just amazed when you actually went through the process at the end of the meeting, that you went into a smoke building that we used in the school. It was it was pretty extraordinary, and you all, and nobody seemed to panic. You seemed to know what you were supposed to be doing and where you were supposed to be, and that's a, I didn't expect that. I mean, I after even seeing everything, I didn't expect you to look so professional and to react in the way you did. So I just want to compliment you and encourage council to be sure you're looking at this another time. I think this is a great event, and I can't believe that this isn't going to grow, and there's going to be so many, when we get this more out in the public, and I understand you've been doing that by the newspapers, that we'll get a number of young people that want to be a part of this. So I just want, let's give them a round of applause for the profession. Laurie, Laurie and the staff, they did an excellent job, really. So my compliments to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now is the time for citizens, who I'd like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, and I have several cards up here, so I'm going to start with Alan Krabbe, if you will come, please, Alan. And as you're coming up, I will tell you, and you are used to this, but I must repeat this, the council will listen to comments and may take one of the following actions: respond to your criticism, if there is, request the staff investigate and report on the matter, request the matter be scheduled on future agendas, and this is for all the people that are coming up, because we have quite a few tonight. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light and buzzer will let you know when you have 30 seconds left to speak. And before you begin, please identify yourself clearly by stating, for the public record, your name and address.
Hey, hi, I'm Alan Krabbe, and I live with my wife Kate on 16495 West Almeria Road in Goodyear. Mayor Lord and Goodyear City Council members, we consider you all friends, and it has been a real pleasure for both Kate and myself these last four years to work as a part of the Goodyear Volunteers on street cleanup. We took possession of McDowell Road from 303 to Saraval, and we extended that a little bit from continuing up north or south on Saraval to I-10, not because it was such a good time, but because the need was there. Typically, Kate and I undertook our litter gathering on an every-other-week basis, and while I indicated that we took a great deal of pleasure and a good feeling in our hearts at the conclusion of each weekend endeavors to pick up the litter, make it a litter-free road and roadside and adjoining areas, I will also have to tell you that it's disheartening to, within an hour or two after we'd completed that task that day, to take a drive down McDowell and find a collection of litter and materials on the on the road and in the sides that were just dumped after we'd even completed our work. Tonight, Kate and I have a simple request of you, and that is that we would ask the council members to consider supporting a message that Goodyear does care about keeping its streets and byways clear of debris, that we all take so much pride in living in Goodyear and keeping it a safe and a beautiful place to live. We propose that this message might be communicated by way of signs throughout the city that are intended to remind the public that it is a crime to litter in our community and that a fine will be imposed for ignoring such a plea. And we just, you do this job for four years, and it's a good feeling that, but it's a mixed emotion, too, because you begin to be a little critical, and you go, why can't they just pick up after themselves? Would be so nice. So that's our request of you. No one deserves a legacy after just four years of any kind of service, but it would make us very, very proud to see this kind of thing come to the attention of everyone day in and day out. We thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Alan and Kate, your wife Kate, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming up, and city manager will look into the request about doing something, messaging of some sort out to the public about it isn't good to throw their trash out the window.
Yes, we will follow up on this.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, can we ask him a question?
Well, yes, ask the lawyer here, I'm, you know, I'm sort of...
Regarding the litter?
We can ask a question, yes.
We can ask, thank you.
My question is the litter that is on McDowell, do you feel it could be perhaps coming from trucks going to the transfer station?
Absolutely.
Then we need to address that as well. That's what I I was concerned with, because I was down that road week before last, and it, you could see that things had flown out of the trucks.
Yeah, we see that in the neighborhoods as well, and we've talked with waste management and said, you know, we can just follow the trucks at times, and we see the debris falling out.
And see it falling out, okay.
Not to say that the blame is all there.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's all of us, it's everyone with a pickup that's not covered in the back, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we can look into that as well, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wally.
Councilman Stipp?
You're welcome.
Alan, I just, I unfortunately was unable to attend the volunteer appreciation dinner, but I personally want to thank you for all the service. That is a very tireless, never-ending job, unfortunately. So thank you very much for doing that. My question is about the sign, the electronic sign messaging boards that we've got up on McDowell, et cetera, that we got from McDOT. Does everybody know what I'm talking about?
Yes, you do, because we have a certain amount of time.
Do we have, no, not on 10, the ones on McDowell and...
That's just a little beyond Saraval, to the east.
Yeah, do we have access to message on those? I mean, personally, I've never seen them on, so I don't even know if they're, you know...
I don't think...
They're working, can, I'm just curious, and if McDowell seems to be our problem, perhaps that might be a an alternative, but I'm more curious whether they're actually working, and do we have the ability to message on them?
We're checking right now with staff.
Thank you, Alan.
Mayor, members of the council, Luke Albert, city traffic engineer, we do have access to put messages on those signs. We're still kind of working through some of the implementation process with McDOT to actually get those up and running to get the messages onto the signs, but we can certainly put safety messages on the signs, like don't drink and drive, buckle up, that kind of stuff. We'd have to look into a message about about littering. I'm not sure that would fit, but they're more, you know...
Don't throw stuff out of your car.
It's transportation funding, so we'd just have to check into whether that was...
Yeah. You don't want me doing the messaging, but...
So we'll certainly look into whether that's allowable, but we certainly can put the safety message on there.
Well, we can certainly do that, and there is just a suggestion, we do have that wonderful in focus, that we can remind people about that and be specific on it, so that would help us also. Okay, thank you very much. All right, the next one is on the airpark, it's Mary Doblander. And I think you heard the my instructions before, so I won't repeat it.
I can get back there. Good evening, Mayor Lord and Councilmembers. We live at 2621, my name is Mary Doblander. We have a property at 2621 South 157th Drive. We bought the property about three and a half years ago. It was a nice, peaceful property, now it is just a noise factory. In 7:30 in the morning, we have all the airpark traffic coming over our house. It's not the airplanes that are coming to sky hop, they're way up in the sky. These are coming right over our house. Saturday night, we couldn't even, it was a beautiful evening, couldn't even watch TV because it feels like the the planes are coming right through our property, right through our house. It's that, it's the engines that sound like, almost like a lawnmower, and it's from 7:30 in the morning until 11, after 11 o'clock, every single night. We don't, we don't even enjoy going out in our backyard anymore, and it's it's really become an issue. We haven't had it before, but it's really become an issue for us. You know, we didn't think we'd buy a property where we wouldn't be able to enjoy the outdoors or be able to keep our doors open when the weather is beautiful. So I'd appreciate if maybe they can look at a different alternative for the pattern that the planes go by, maybe towards areas on, on, you know, where residents are living. I would really appreciate it, both my husband and I would.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobler, for being, coming up this evening, and I think the city manager, you have all that information, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And somebody will be getting back to her?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go to, well, let me, let me, let me do it this way, I think I'll weigh down this one, to Tom Parker, airport traffic pattern.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm here to...
Before you do that, just say your name and your address for the public.
Tom Parker, 2621 South 157th Drive, Goodyear.
Thank you.
And I'm here to back up what Mary just said. It seems like, I would just like the council and the city management to consider a different flight pattern for the pipers. I'm sure they're probably training young pilots or what have you, and they have a consistent pattern that goes clockwise. They go towards the southwest to take off, they come back around right over our house, and then loop around and land, and then take off again. So I would like the the consideration of perhaps letting them teach them how to turn left, as well as right, and maybe take it out over Buckeye, towards Estrella Mountain, looping back around that way. The noise factor, I get up at 5:00 in the morning to go to work, and it's oftentimes 11:15, 11:30, when it's like quiet, without the engines going over. The other thing I was thinking about, too, is that the current pattern goes over a lot of schools, you know, and these go on every day, and I know that the statistics on incidents is very low, I'm sure, but if something were to happen in a heavily populated area, especially a school, while it's in session, I think that would be tragic if we could figure out a different flight pattern that takes it out over less populated areas. So that's my request. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming up, Mr. Parker. Again, we'll have staff get back to you, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming up.
And Mayor, if I may, just, obviously, we will be talking with the airport, we have limitations as a city, but we have a working dialogue. In fact, the airport manager's here tonight, but we can't address this with him and the audience, because it's a non-agend item, but it may be something where we bring back to council in terms of communications, as far as what the FAA requirements are and more, more along those lines, but understand, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, the next one is on Sky Kids, Bill Antonucci. Bill?
I'm Bill Antonucci, I live at 9339 South 180th Avenue in Goodyear, of course, and I just wanted to come up this evening and and offer our gratitude to the city, to the council, because we have, this coming Saturday, we will have our fourth, hopefully, very successful event at the Goodyear Airport, and we could not have done the past three without the help that we get from Goodyear in terms of the support from the fire department, from the police department, and financial support, and people that help us that volunteer. So we wanted to express our gratitude, my team, there's only seven of us, but we're all over the place this evening. Joe is here, as Brian pointed out, but we had a plaque made for you that I don't know how to get to you without throwing it. Maybe if I give it to to Brian or something?
I can come down, they don't allow me to come down.
They do.
I think the lawyer allowed me to come down.
Thank you very much to you and the council. We're expecting 163 families to come, and...
Bill, what? Oh, sure, sure. Sky Kids is a donation that my, a charity that my wife, what is this? I've never been accused of needing a microphone. Is there anybody that can't hear me? That's silly.
To pick up the video.
Oh, all right. My wife and I started this four years ago, and we have conducted this event every year in April, this time of the year, in the Goodyear Airport. What we do is give airplane rides, general aviation airplanes. We have about 25 pilots with their own private airplanes that volunteer with us, and we give special needs children airplane airplane rides, about a 25-minute ride is what they do. We go out over the back of the Estrella Mountains, and it's extremely rewarding to see the smiles on some of these children's faces, kids that are in wheelchairs, and little girls that have no hair because they're in chemo, and it's heartbreaking. The first two hours, you spend crying, and then after that, it's just a wonderful, wonderful day. And again, thank you to the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And on behalf of the city council, thank you very, very much, and we will certainly put this black plaque on the wall with great honor. All right, let's go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda, item 6.1 and 6.2, by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes from a regular meeting and a special meeting held on March 16th, 2015. Item 6.2, accept the dedication of a public utility and access easement and subordination and a public road and utility easement and subordination for a portion of 183rd Avenue.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, could I please have an emotion, a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stipp and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, let's go to the business. The first item is a public hearing to consider a text amendment to Palm Valley 303 planned development. So let's open the public hearing. Karen Craver, planner three, to present.
Thank you again, Mayor. This PAD amendment to increase the maximum building height from 50 feet to 75 feet is like the zoning ordinance amendment you all approved recently to increase the maximum building height in the I-1 zoning district. This PAD amendment is being requested to increase the potential clear story height in future buildings in four phases in PV 303 PAD. Sunbelt Holdings, like the city, is finding that the establishment of industrial businesses that we'd all like to have in the city is hindered by the current 50-foot height limitation. As defined in the zoning ordinance, every inch of a building, from the bottom of the slab to the top of the roof, is counted in the 50-foot building maximum. The clear story, the usable space between the floor and the ceiling, which is what the industrial users operate their businesses in, is far less than 50 feet. Staff agrees with Sunbelt that a PAD text amendment is the best way to expand the development potential of these four phases of the PAD. The planning commission did so as well by a vote of six to zero. With that, we are recommending approval of the PAD amendment. If, after taking any public comment, you choose to approve the amendment, we ask that you first adopt Resolution 151696, declaring the amendment language as a public record, and then adopt Ordinance 151318, providing for approval of the amendment.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and will the city clerk please read Resolution 15-1696 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution 15-1696, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled Exhibit A Amendment to PV 303 PAD Development Parameters and Uses April 2015.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell, a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote.
Sorry, I have one question.
Yeah, Osborne?
Karen, just, just for the record, I know that you have within here that when certain PADs come for final plat or approval, that Luke will give their approval at that time, correct? So have they been informed of this ordinance that there is no issue with Luke Air Force Base with this change?
Yes, they have. We contacted this, contacted them about this amendment. They did not object, and in fact, some of the phases, Phase Four and Three, that are actually closer to Luke, already had 75-foot maximum height allowances in them.
I just wanted verification, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Let's go to number two. Will the city clerk please read Ordinance 15-1318 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 15-1318, providing for an amendment to the Palm Valley 303 planned area development, generally located on the east and west sides of SR 303, and on the north and south sides of Indian School Road, to increase the maximum allowed building height, adopting supplementary zoning map number 15-01A, providing for corrections, severability, and effective date and penalties.
Thank you. Could I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne, a second from Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
We're on 7.2. The business item is a public hearing to consider rezoning 178, 178 acres for the Estrella Commons Planned Area Development. Public hearing opening, open. Katie Wilken, planning manager, to present. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you stated, this is a request to rezone the area known as Estrella Commons, which is located southwest of Interstate 10 and Estrella Parkway. It's just north and adjacent to the Rancho Mirage residential neighborhood. It's bounded by the Bullard Wash on the east, and then Estrella Parkway and commercial properties on the west. The request is for 59.1 acres of area known as the district, which would be a mix of commercial office and potentially mixed-use residential uses. This area is proposed for preliminary PAD because the level of detail on the standards does not meet the final PAD requirement, so they will have to have another zoning action on the district areas to finalize that zoning. It would come before a public hearing be noticed to the surrounding properties once again. On the remaining 118.9 acres, which includes the multifamily and the single-family portions, that portion is being requested for final PAD. Then if I can use Elmo for a second, and just to show you as a comparison, this is the current zoning plan that was approved in 2006, and the major differences are that this area was originally planned for a residential portion, and now it's being planned as the district. It does also include some areas in here. It it looks much larger on the existing exhibit, because some of these areas were planned as commercial as well, and there's no changes there. It's mostly this portion here. And then the other major change is the area here, this is currently zoned for residential, but currently it's zoned for higher-density, multifamily-type residential along here, and then single-family residential at a higher density in this area here. And they're proposing single-family detached residential in the current zoning application. Now I can go back to PowerPoint. Thank you. This is the conceptual lot layout. As I said, the preliminary PD will require additional rezoning, and the multifamily, we don't have a conceptual lot layout for that, multifamily's typically reviewed at site plan. The, as you can see, the single-family along... As you can see, the single-family along Interstate 10, Evergreen DevCo did submit a noise study back in 2006, which is still in place, and that requires building a 20- to 23-foot tall wall. And that will, according to the noise study, the outside noise will be reduced from 263 decibels. Our zoning ordinance requires it be at 64 or lower, so they are exceeding that requirement. And then the wall will have the decibel level inside buildings at 38 decibels, and our requirement is 45 or lower. So again, it exceeds that decibel level. Just to highlight the different lot widths of the area, too, you can see that they are proposing the 50- and 60-foot wide lots closer to the interstate. 55-foot wide lots are located adjacent, this is Rancho Mirage under the legend, and those are existing at 50-foot wide lots, so they have 55-foot wide lots adjacent, so they're slightly larger, similar-type residential. And then they have the larger 70-foot wide lots along the Bullard Wash. We did receive one written comment since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and there were several major concerns in that. The first was that there would be a shared wall between these residents to the south in Rancho Mirage and the residents to the north, and that the residents of Rancho Mirage were the ones who paid for it and maintain it. This is something that goes, this is a condition that is elsewhere in the city of Goodyear, and we don't know of any problems we've had with this. Whether it's open space, commercial, no matter what use is on the other side, this is typically how development happens. The first one to develop builds the wall, and then the development to the next door does get to share that wall, and then there's agreements between the property owners associations or HOA associations on how the maintenance of those walls are going to be shared. So this is a typical situation. We understand the concern of the resident. There was also a comment about the apartments being proposed, and the apartments are located adjacent to Australia Parkway, and they aren't directly adjacent to the Rancho Mirage neighborhood. So they are separated, and they are along an arterial parkway, which is consistent with the general plan. Finally, there was a concern with increased traffic. There was a question on whether there was going to be only a single point of access, and you can see here, 151st Avenue does connect down into Rancho Mirage, so there will be a connection between those two neighborhoods. That connection is currently in place, so it is somewhat obvious that that road was going to keep going north because it dead-ends right there waiting to be extended. But there is another connection point. This isn't the only way to get to Van Buren is through this neighborhood. You can see there's this connection point here. So there is lower densities, meaning there's going to be less people in the area. The existing zoning allowed for up to 1,500 dwelling units, and that included the multifamily and single-family portions, and the current zoning would allow for around 750 units if you include the single-family and the multifamily. And so they are cutting the number of residents by half, and so we don't foresee a concern with the traffic going through the neighborhood. But there was another question about speed bumps on 151st Avenue, and we have tried to reach out to the resident, but we would be happy to talk about our speed bump policy and how speed bumps can be considered in a neighborhood if that is a concern with the traffic on 151st Avenue. Finally, there was a question on whether the public hearing was noticed properly, and I can assure you that there was notice given. There was two signs posted on the property, mailers were sent to the neighborhood, and it appeared in the paper. We did continue the item at the Planning and Zoning Commission, but we were able to preserve notice because we continued it to a date specific, so there might have been some confusion there, but we did renotice for the public hearing tonight. So the sign was updated. We sent out more mailers, and a notice appeared in the paper once again, so that there was clear there was a second public hearing and another opportunity to comment. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they did recommend approval by a 4-3 vote. The major concerns by the three dissenting voters primarily concentrated around the location of the single-family residential near the interstate. There was citations of a section of our general plan, which was included in the staff report, that discourages the location of single-family residential developments along freeways. Even if buffers are used, it's still highly discouraged. This doesn't prevent any approval because it is the general plan, and it says discouraged. It doesn't say that it's not permitted, and the applicant has a presentation and can go into more detail about the research they've done about why only single-family can work in this area because of some of the access. The Bullard Wash cuts off some of the access points of the collector roadways, and so it does make multifamily and commercial development of this property somewhat difficult. Staff feels that by, if this were permitted, it doesn't set a precedent that that means single-family is allowed everywhere along freeways, that we do think the applicant has demonstrated that this piece of property has unique physical constraints that make single-family the viable use at this property, which is why staff recommended approval at the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, there still were concerns about the noise levels for these residents and just the impact of being so close to a freeway, which is why three of the planning commissioners still felt that they had to recommend denial of the case at the Planning and Zoning Commission. We also did, since the Planning Commission, we did revise some of the stipulations of approval. Many of them were just wordsmithing, but there's a few I do want to point out to you. One is that since the Planning Commission meeting, this area that is the district, we did have a stipulation that stated it was preliminary in nature, but to clarify, we stated that this area will follow the city's central business district zoning district criteria until it's adopted by final PAD. And so we're just making it clear that that's our benchmark zoning district. So it's not too different in concept, but we did clarify that. The other item we did was, there was a stipulation requiring the buffer that's been provided and enhanced landscaping, but to try and address some of the concerns, we added that there shall be 36-inch box trees spaced 15 feet on center along this entire length to help with the noise and visual impact of the freeway and the wall. And finally, there was a stipulation added, stipulation number 31, regarding the streets. The plan is to have these as public streets dedicated to the city, and we just, we want to make those, we want council to make those decisions at preliminary plat, so we just have a stipulation clarifying that the city's not agreeing to public streets at this time, but we're not saying no either, and that's something that'll be reviewed in more detail when we review the preliminary plat with City Council. That concludes my presentation. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the zoning, and I know the applicant is also available and has a presentation they would like to make with more additional information. Ed Bull, representing Evergreen DevCo, is here, as well as other representatives on the case, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicant would be happy to answer questions he may have.
Are there any speaker cards besides the one I have here? All right, I'm going to ask the Speaker to come up first that's made out the card, Mr. Bull, so would Serena Denning please come forth? And please state your, were you here to be earlier this evening? So, okay, so you know the rules of the timeframe, so welcome.
Hi, my name is Serena Denning. I live at 15248 West Fillmore Street with my husband and my three kids. We moved to Goodyear. The house was a new build in 2001. The property behind us was originally zoned as agricultural, low-density property, horse property, and since then, it has undergone already a zoning change, and now is a request for the permanent PAD to be approved. We met with the developers 2008, or excuse me, 2007, to go over the proposed residential area at that time. It's changed a lot since then. We had reached, not an agreement, but an understanding with the builder then that we met with regarding the homes being built directly behind our Rancho Mirage community. The reason I'm mostly concerned is I live right against that wall. I live on the third lot in the northwest corner of the property, and they talk about the shared wall and how it's, other people have used it in the past and whatever. That's fine and dandy, but this concerns me right now. So what everybody else did, that's their concern, but my concern right now is the liability for the wall. We paid for it. It's part of our property. They want to build up against it, so who's going to be liable for it? And also, it's kind of unclear on the map, considering where I live, what exactly is going to be behind my house. There's a, I live right here. It looks like there's a green space or something.
Can somebody help her with the Elmo so that, please, thank you.
Right here.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I live right here, and so it says it's going to be a naturalistic landscape design, and I just wanted clarification of what exactly is going there. Two houses down from me where it looks like the other homes are going, but my concern is rightly so for my property. We have a lot of people who rent in and out of the neighborhood since the 14 years that I've been there, and we plan on staying. We love Goodyear. We bought a house here because we wanted to stay here, raise our kids here, but my concern is my property values of what is going to be built behind us. Are we going to stay here, or is this something that we need to hurry up and sell our house now and get out while we can? So the clarification that I guess I want is who's going to be liable for that common wall, and what exactly is being built behind my house?
Thank you very much, Ms. Denning. Appreciate it. All right. Mr. Bull?
Members of the council. Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. If I may, I would like to begin by introducing several people here this evening from Evergreen, and I want to introduce them not only to recognize that they're here, but also in case you have questions of some of the folks who've been with Evergreen with 40 years, 21 years, 20 years, and so on of experience. In case you have some questions that are best answered by them, I want to make sure that we get the right person up to the podium. One of the people that's here is one of the founding principals of Evergreen, Bruce Palmeroy, blue shirt, red tie. He's been in the business for over 40 years. I teased him somehow about how he could be a young man and still be in the business over 40 years, and we decided to work that out later. Laura Ortiz, who many of you know, is here. Laura's been, is with Evergreen as well, one of the senior people there, and has been in the business for 21 years. Matt Evans is here against the wall. Evergreen, as you know, is predominantly in the commercial development business, and you know some of the other developments they've built here in Goodyear, but they also have a multifamily division. Matt's been involved in multifamily development and multifamily financing for 20 years. Some of you may remember his father's company as well, that was very involved in multifamily development here in the valley for many years prior to that. Kelly Hayes is here. Kelly's been in the development business, most of it with Evergreen, for 13 years. And then we have Casey Christiansen, who's not with Evergreen. Casey's here on the back. Casey's with Nate Nathan's office. Some of you know Nate Nathan. Nate was the honored guest at a surprise birthday party tonight, so he couldn't be here since it was his surprise and his birthday, but Nathan and associates have been involved with Evergreen for a good long while on marketing various aspects of this overall master plan. So with some of those folks here, my hope is that if you have questions that I can't answer, they can, because our goal is to get the answers to you to any questions you may have. This aerial obviously outlines the site. The various patchwork colors that are on there simply are indicative as to whether or not there was an ag crop in place at the time that this area was shot, but as you know, we are located at the southeast quadrant of Australia Parkway and I-10, and we abut the, I need to move something here. We abut the west edge of Bullard Wash. So we have, as I want to emphasize on this exhibit, because part of what I will be discussing with you and that Katie mentioned as well, is the uniqueness of this particular site, and that obviously we have no frontage, I mean, we have frontage, but we have no access across our I-10 frontage. That's very typical. We have really no access coming about 230 feet down Astraea Parkway, because that's a part of ADOT's access control due to the interchange. That's fairly typical as well to have ADOT access control on an arterial and an interchange. What is unique about this site is that we have no access through Bullard Wash and never will. In other words, unlike, say, if we were on the north side of the freeway where McDowell comes through and where properties can not only front onto the freeway, but they can access off of McDowell Road, we cannot mimic that on the south side of the freeway because we can never cross through Bullard Wash. That's very important as we talk about the land use in this particular area, because as Katie indicated, that land use from our old, our existing PAD, our old PAD booklet, anticipated that there would be some form of residential there, be it some higher density, be it condos, townhouses, whatever it may be, that there'd be residential in this part of the freeway. It's always been the case. The district, which is predominantly commercial and so on over here, and residential here. The difference is that Evergreen's learned over the past many years that they've been trying to market this frontage, that some type of multifamily will not work in that location, and it won't work for a variety of reasons, including the lack of access through here. In discussing what to do with Nate Nathan's office and with various builders and so on, Evergreen, through discussions with staff, has created this plan. As Katie indicated, and as you know from your materials, on this plan, we have a significant landscape buffer and noise wall along the I-10 frontage. We'll talk about that more, trail linkages and so on. But the main point of this exhibit is to point out the uniqueness of this site in the context of we cannot connect east-west through this area, unlike any other site that I'm aware of that would be expected to develop with some kind of higher-density residential development along the freeway frontage. As we look at this particular plan, this open-space framework plan, I put it up here because we want to emphasize many of the good things that are still being provided in this plan as compared to the plan which the city approved, the PAD that the city approved many years ago. A PAD that had access coming in off of Roosevelt, windowing into an open-space area, and then accesses coming in different directions spinning off of that. Access here, access here, and then access down to Van Buren, all of which is being maintained today. As we look at this exhibit, windowing into this main common area park, which is just under eight acres, and then the various pocket parks and other open-space opportunities that are here, including, Mrs. Denning, that you are correct, this is an open-space tract that will occur behind your home down here in this location. The aspects of this plan that staff has pointed out in their staff report that were very important then and now are mixed use. This is clearly still very much a mixed-use plan with the district and the district and multifamily and more district and various sizes and types of single-family. Also, that sizes and types of housing is very important for the diverse housing aspect to this. The open space that we've talked about, and shows up some here and more on another exhibit as well, and then some of the design criteria that's woven into this of the design criteria that's woven into this PAD to assure that this is a high-quality uh, and, and desirable place for residents of Goodyear to live. The, uh, the aspect that Katie talked about that will require more attention in the future through processing the final PAD is over here in the district. There is plenty of detail in the PAD booklets uh, that are provided to you in staff reports with respect to this residential aspect of it. As we look at the, uh, recommendations that are in front of you, staff, as you know, in their written report, and Katie here tonight, uh, staff is recommending approval, and staff very openly discussed this standard 28 that comes out of your general plan. Um, general plans, as you know, and as yours expressly provides are, are guideline kind of documents. Yours also talks about a number of standards, one of which is 28, which discourages uh, residential proximate to the freeway. We had residential and still are proposing residential proximate to the freeway. What it then talks about are what are you providing for buffers? And we have a multitude of buffers, including not only the distance and the noise wall, but in trees planted 15-foot-on centers, which is added into the stipulation that Katie was talking about tonight. But we agree with staff's analysis. Uh, that analysis was the byproduct of lots of discussion between Evergreen representatives and staff as to what makes sense along this frontage. Because simply zoning it for some type of higher-density residential years ago didn't work. We know it won't work. Um, and we need to fix it. Uh, as we move on through, and I, Mayor, with your permission, I'll run quickly through some of these other slides. This is the plan from back in 2006, and this is really the area that's the bulk of the discussion. And that's all residential of higher-density types than what we're proposing today. On one hand, uh, the land use in the sense of residential isn't changing. The density of use is proposed to change. Some people would say the fact we're putting fewer residents proximate to freeway is good. Others would say, well, freeway frontage is normally a place to put multifamily. All we know is that people are very good at what they do and heavily invested in Goodyear have tried and tried repeatedly to make some type of multifamily work here. It won't. They know it won't in the future, and their own multifamily division would not build multifamily in this location because of some of the access and other challenges we talked about. Looking at this plan, again, we come in off of Roosevelt, intentionally windowing in to the big, uh, almost eight-acre park. There's intentionally trail systems north, south, and east-west running throughout this development. Trail systems that will provide pedestrian connection over to Bullard Wash when Bullard Wash becomes the lineal park that I know that the city wants it to become. North-south trails that connect this residential up here as well to that Central Park and the trail system that parallels the freeway. Open area, this is that Central Park that I was talking about, conceptual design for it. Uh, these are some of the Paseo concepts and passive open space concepts that are shown elsewhere on this plan, uh, back in some of these other smaller, uh, mini-park and open space tract areas. Uh, in terms of the unique site, I think we've talked about most of these things. And yes, it's a freeway proximate site. Yes, we're at an interchange, but you can't get there from here. And you can't get there from here from the interchange, and you can't get there from here across Bullard Wash. Uh, those and related challenges have led us to, um, reach the conclusion that single family in that location is the best land use. We then get into, of course, noise mitigation, and this slide was put together for the planning commission hearing, and actually, this slide has been amplified some since then, because we've done additional homework, as Katie mentioned, since the planning commission hearing. Uh, the noise study that Katie was talking about, again, uh, was completed uh, years ago and calls for a noise wall that Katie talked about, and I, I can show you in a moment if you'd like. Um, but we not only stuck with that noise study, but Evergreen also asked for a third-party, um, peer review of that noise study. Uh, they asked me who I'd suggest for that. I recommended Tony Sola. You may or may not know Tony. Tony's been in the acoustical, um, study and, and consulting and educational business for about 25 years. He teaches, he's taught a class and still does at ASU for over 20 years. He's consulted on noise to ADOT. Uh, he's reviewed plans for Scottsdale and Phoenix and Paradise Valley. Uh, Tony tells me that he's done over 500 noise studies, many of which are proximate to freeway locations, because that's why sometimes you get into needing to do noise studies. Tony reviewed the prior consultant's noise study. He agrees with the methodology. He agrees with the findings and conclusions and the recommendations, uh, including the noise wall. That study does not take into account rubberized asphalt. It presumes it's not rubberized asphalt, and we know that depending on who you ask, rubberized asphalt decreases noise somewhere between at least four and eight to 10 dB is what I'm consistently told it will do. We know it's, it's, it's a good thing, but we don't take credit for it in a noise study. But the noise study was not only done, but third-party peer review. Tony found, Tony Sola found nothing unusual about this, and is very comfortable with typical construction techniques having compatible homes in this location and so on. Second item is the 80-foot noise buffer, or 80-foot buffer that's along there. That's a buffer between the noise wall and the rear property lines of those houses that back up, uh, to the freeway frontage. It, or back up to that, that buffer. It's addressed further in your updated stipulations, as Katie mentioned. Your stipulations not only call for the noise wall and so on, uh, but it was updated to call for 36-inch box trees planted 15-foot-on centers in that 80-foot-wide corridor. Uh, that's a lot of trees and corresponding bushes in the trail system to go in there. From my perspective on the noise study, we have, through not only the study and the stipulations, we have belt and suspenders, and, and I think we could somewhat tongue-in-cheek say not only belt and suspenders, but duct tape as well, because we've done the noise study. The noise wall was preliminarily designed, the peer review of the noise study and the wall. In addition to that, uh, you have stipulation 29, which addresses this 80-foot-wide buffer where houses back up to the noise wall. And then stipulation 30 requires that this noise study be reviewed and approved by staff before final plat, and requires that the noise wall along the freeway be built before any houses are, receive a C of O within 500 feet of that freeway frontage. So again, lots of checks and balances along the way, and you dovetail that with some of your other stipulation and disclosure requirements that appear elsewhere in these zoning stipulations. There is no question that anybody considering purchasing a home within this development will know where it is in the context of the freeway. They will know that there's to be a noise wall there if it's not already built by the time they're looking at a potential home, and they will have the disclosures of what's to occur in that buffer area and so on. So there should not be any surprises. There will be plenty of disclosures that occur not only through your zoning stips, but of course through CCNRs and separate disclosure statements and the plat and so on and so forth. In addition to that, the, as is indicated up there, we'd asked the noise consultants and Tony Sola to, uh, identify if there's any unusual construction materials or techniques that would be required in this setting, and there's not. Uh, and we've agreed to provide the trail and so on and so forth within that buffer area. So there's been a lot of attention paid to this area, even after staff reached the conclusion of, all right, this land use makes sense, because it's already identified and zoned for residential. It's just the multifamily-type residential will not work in that location. So let's make sure, if we're satisfying the other guidance of this standard 28, let's make sure we do a darn good job of satisfying it through disclosures in the wall and so on. Uh, this is the location of the noise wall, in that, again, the area that we're talking about mostly here this evening is this area right here. The noise wall runs along the freeway frontage, and then it has these, what I'll call wing walls, coming down in this area and coming down in this area to pick up any spillover noise that would be coming in from the ends. Uh, that's a 22 to 23-foot approximately noise wall in various locations along here. Uh, and again, it's something that two noise consultants have indicated is the wall that they believe makes good sense. This is a, kind of an artist rendering perspective of, this is I-10 Estrella Parkway, then obviously Pebble Creek Parkway going off at being north in that direction. So it's as though you're standing kind of at the northwestern quadrant of I-10 and the Pebble Creek Parkway slash Estrella Parkway interchange, looking southeasterly, seeing the district here and here, future multifamily here, a single family in this area, more district down in this area. Artist rendering, again, windowing in to this Central Park area, and you can see other pocket parks and so on that are occurring. As you know, this commercial that exists along here was constructed, um, over time by Evergreen, and the commercial development at the northeast quadrant of I-10 and Estrella Parkway was also zoned and developed by, uh, by Evergreen. They are not strangers to Goodyear. They're not strangers to this area. The assemblage of this property has been, uh, a long time coming, has been acquiring it from the family that's owned it for years. Uh, in conclusion, we very much appreciate staff's analysis and findings and conclusions and recommendation for approval. We appreciate the planning commission's recommendation for approval as well. I recognize that it was a 4-3 vote at the planning commission. Uh, I recognize that there were different perspectives on what a standard in a general plan means as to whether it's a guideline or it's a regulation. Um, I'm very confident that repeatedly the general plan says they're guidelines, and I know that that's how staff has interpreted it, and I, that's the only way I know of that a general plan can work, is with guidelines. So in a unique situation like this, going back to the access and other challenges associated with this site, how do we take that guideline, which discourages residential along vast stretches of the freeway frontage? We get that. Uh, part of our challenge is to show what's unique, or at least highly unusual, about this site, and to do so in a manner that also addresses appropriate compatibilities and mitigation efforts. Uh, we appreciate those recommendations, uh, and we would, uh, also like to reconfirm that Evergreen is fine with the 31 stipulations. Uh, two of them were modified, and then number 31 was added, uh, before coming here this evening. And 31 is really a transitional kind of stipulation is, you may recall that under our old PAD, um, at that time, the desire was to sort of bring, what I say, bring California to Arizona. It was a, um, there was thought at that time that there were some California products that would work great in Arizona, California designer. Got to make it really green to look like California. To do that along streets, you have to make them private streets, because Goodyear, like most cities, doesn't allow high-water consumption plants like turf within public street rights of way. So this 2006-era PAD involved all private streets. Some of you may recall, that was of some concern to some people at the city at the time, because of higher HOA fees and additional water consumption and so on. Um, we now want to get rid of the private streets. Stipulation 31, um, allows that to happen, subject to the city's approval. What stipulation 31 in the updated ordinance in your package for tonight says, look, all these little alignments that we show here on these zoning plans, uh, as, as street alignments, they're not really streets until such time as they're dedicated to the city as being streets, or conveyed to an HOA as being private streets. Uh, and at the time, when the time comes to make them streets, be it public or private, we need to do so in accordance with the city's standards, or as otherwise approved by the city. To dedicate them to the city, we need to do it on a plat or through private dedications, through private instruments, again, accepted by the city. And if any part of it were to be private streets, and later somebody wanted to turn it into a public street, it says what a stip needs to say, and that says, you're not turning a private street into a public street unless the city accepts it as a public street and the city's sole and absolute discretion. So straightforward kind of stipulation that reconfirms the way I believe Goodyear does and has always done business in the concept of streets. Um, with respect to, to, um, Ms. Denny's other comment about, uh, the wall and the open space and so on, again, as I mentioned, if I understand correctly, the Denny's home is the third home east of this north-south street. So it's, it's right in this area. And as she's indicated, and as I mentioned before, this is, um, one of those open space tracks that would be HOA-owned and maintained. With respect to the wall that's along here, uh, as Katie's indicated, for, as long as I've been doing this, longer than most people over there, except for the young gentleman in the blue shirt and the red tie, he's been doing it a little longer than I, um, I've never seen a successful application of two parallel walls that are two or three or six inches apart. Uh, I've been in a number of discussions in a variety of settings involving that, and every time it's been decided that that is just an invitation for a mess. Um, instead, what happens is, just as Katie indicated, whoever the first builder in, if there's going to be a wall, builds that wall. Uh, as you know, walls aren't normally required around single-family lots. We, in Arizona, tend to put them in. We have to put them in if we're going to have a, a pool, but walls are typically occurring in these situations. I have an exhibit, if you want to see it in PowerPoint, that shows that that wall, per our survey, appears to be right on or straddling perhaps the common property line. Um, I, I believe that the right thing to do is, as Katie indicated, you have one wall there, you don't have another wall two or three or six inches apart with opportunities for stuff to live between those two walls that you don't want there. Uh, I think that there can be additional discussion between Evergreen and the HOA about, for example, if we were to do something silly and knock down a part of that wall, we got to replace it. Conversely, if some neighbor on the south side knocked down a part of the wall, they would replace it. It's how I'm used to these kind of common wall agreements to occur. Uh, if an act of God caused the wall to, in part, to crack or knock down, then people get together and, and share in that cost. Very typical kind of arrangement. It's one that, um, I think is, from my perspective, what every city I can think of has consistently determined as being the right thing to do and not have two parallel walls almost touching, but not quite touching. So, having said that, uh, we are here with a PAD that, from our perspective, modernizes this PAD, brings it into practical reality in the context of we know California is not necessarily coming to Arizona in all aspects. We know it's not a good thing to line every street with turf. We know it's not a good thing to jack up HOA fees with maintaining private streets unless there's some critical thing to, aspect to do that. We know that this is a unique site, uh, in the context of what happens because of Bullard Wash. And we know that very genuine marketing efforts by Evergreen have not borne fruit with respect to some kind of a higher-density residential in this area. We know that Nate Nathan's office says that will never happen. We know that our own multifamily division says that would never happen on Evergreen's watch. So we need to fix it. It isn't going, it isn't a situation where simply leaving it zoned, some higher-density residential is going to solve itself in time. It won't. We need to fix it, and we believe, at least staff has, has reached the right conclusions with how to fix it and how to properly, properly study it and buffer it. And if that's, uh, acceptable to your council, we would request approval accordingly with the recommendations we have in front of you, including the 31 updated stipulations that are in your ordinance. If you have questions of me or any of the Evergreen folks that are here, we'll do our best to answer them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bull. Okay. Uh, I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read ordinance 15-1321 by title only? And will the city clerk please read ordinance 15-1321 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 15-1321, conditionally rezoning 59.1 acres from the preliminary planned area development district to the preliminary plat area development district and rezoning 118.9 acres from the final planned area development district to the final planned area development district generally located southeast of Interstate 10 and Astrea Parkway and adopting the Astrea Commons pad dated March 13, 2015, with modified residential development standards to govern development of the property, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion in a second? I heard a motion from Councilman Loretano, and a second from Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Who would like to start? Well, all right, Councilman Loretano.
I'm trying to make sure I'm on. I appreciate the presentation and the concerns of the neighborhood, and I guess one of my concerns was clearly with the noise wall before, and I like the fact that it is going to be done ahead of time, because we just listened, I don't know if you were here earlier when we heard from a couple of residents had concerns with the airport, and I don't know what else we can do to make it clearer, and we're having problems right now with another neighborhood with the 303. So I don't know if there's anything else we can do to make it clearer that the freeway is there. I don't know what else we can do. So I don't know if that's a question, if there's anything else we can do for that, but I see it as a good use of the land, and I'm pretty happy with how it's turned out. I don't have any other questions at this point.
Good. Vice Mayor Pizzillo.
A question for the fire chief.
Do you want the map up there?
Yes, please put the-
Can you put the map up there, it shows the roundabouts, the turnarounds? Yeah, this one right here.
I've seen presentations before from the fire department in which they've had some concerns as far as layout of developments and egress and how to get in there in case there's an emergency. What are your thoughts on this layout?
Well, typically, we like the two modes of access or ingress into the property. We're not crazy about the roundabouts, but, I mean, from the standpoint of the layout of this proposed development, it seems like we are afforded the appropriate access in there, so.
Can I just interject, since he said roundabouts, you might, if I interrupt you just a moment? So, it would seem to me the roundabouts who gives you a turning capacity?
It does. It also slows, I mean, my understanding is the intention of the roundabout is to slow the flow of traffic-
Right.
-obviously into communities, so obviously that would slow the response of vehicles as well, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's what I was kind of getting to, because when I see this layout, and again, you've got some in the back corner as far as how this kind of rolls-
Yep.
-as far as timing, because you're looking at a quick response time, I guess depending on what the issue happens to be.
Correct.
And that's why I was kind of asking for your feedback as far as the layout is concerned.
Yeah, like I said, as long as we have two forms of ingress and egress out of there where we're having-
Okay. My concern, and I'll just mention that I have, and I don't know if it can be addressed or not, noise is going to get louder, and we're getting issues already with noise with several developments as a result of the 303. In fact, we're getting complaints from homes that are nowhere close to the highway as a result of the sound walls going up. Noise echoes, noise bounces back and forth. I realize there's a wall around this, but, and I also understand the view is going to be interesting, I guess, from the backyard when they see the wall. But my concern is, is the noise is going to get worse, and the reason why the noise is going to get worse, once the mall comes in and that traffic, no matter what you put on there, you've got these homes right up against that freeway, even with that sound wall. I tend to lean towards the actual general plan, kind of discourage that. I realize they've done their best effort of trying to do something with this land, but I'm concerned long-term, long-term for the city, not short-term. What's going to happen with this development as the traffic picks up on I-10? That's it.
Any other comments? Councilman Osborne?
Well, I'll start by saying there's some good positives. I believe this area needs density. I also believe PAD having multiple ideas of plans and size of residential areas are appropriate. I appreciate the fact that you did look to make sure if there was any construction materials that could be used that would help with the noise issues. I, you know, I have sympathy for the fact that you're landlocked to a degree. I'm concerned about the sound wall, because right now we're dealing with sound issues north of the 10 because of another sound wall within Pebble Creek, which is causing sound to bounce back towards them. But mostly, my position has never changed in residential homes abutting of freeway. So, north of Roosevelt is a problem for me, and I just will never believe that it's appropriate. I think that the high-density multifamily apartments where you've placed them is fine. Many, many, you know, many things are very good about this. My heartburn is north of Roosevelt, where you have residential. That has never been something I approve of, and unfortunately, I will have to continue to believe in that, and I also believe in the general plan, what our citizens have stated, and I will be voting against that because of that area. But I'm sure as other things come with the multi-housing or other things of, you know, south of Roosevelt will probably just be fine for me, but this general concept because of the residential against the freeway bothers me.
Well, Councilman Campbell?
Thank you. I think I have questions for everyone, especially the presenters, Katie, Mr. Bull, and I am just going to go down the list that I have. So, Katie, I'll start with you. For the historical information, we've had no action on this property since 2012. Is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. That's correct, and most of the action that's taken place has been to extend the zoning, the preliminary PAD. It hasn't been to develop or bring proposals forward, except for the one you see tonight.
Okay. My second question, then, Katie, to you, is, do you feel that this request is in a hurry to get done? I mean, am I the only one that feels like we're really moving quickly on this request, or maybe not?
Thank you. We do have a preliminary plat application in. The applicant might be able to give you more details, but my understanding is, if this was approved, they do plan on moving forward and hope a home builder would purchase it soon. They do hope to, we're working on the preliminary plat. We are waiting for comments from commission and council before we took the preliminary plat forward, so we could make adjustments based on what we hear. But once they bring that forward, then, you know, as you know, the clock starts ticking on those approvals. So typically, we don't see those coming forward unless there's, at least starting now, unless there's a plan to move forward.
Okay, thank you. I'm ready for Mr. Bull now. Sorry. And Mr. Bull, if you can't answer it, please refer to whomever is here that can tell us, but you probably know all these questions or answers, I would hope.
Let's give it a try, and we'll go from there.
Okay, they're fairly simple. Has Evergreen owned this property since 2006?
You thought you were asking a simple question.
I hope so.
The, this whole area, including the land north of I-10 that Evergreen developed with the shopping center-
All of this?
Yeah.
Plus across the street?
Yeah, let me, I don't know, does this arrow show up on your screen?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So everything that's colored up here, coming all the way down the east side of Astrea Parkway, over to here, and up and back over and so on, all of that land, coupled with land north of the freeway where Evergreen built the shopping center, that was owned by the same family. A family with, he's now deceased, but with a fairly determined head of the family, who was willing to sell residential parcels, kind of parcel by parcel over time, and was willing only to ground lease commercial parcels. So the shopping center north of the freeway was built on a ground lease. I believe all of this was built on a ground lease as well, and the district is a ground lease, and so on and so forth. The residential parcels, and I can't tell you, because I didn't represent that family, why they were willing to sell pieces at a time and so on and so forth, but over the past several years, Evergreen has come into ownership of the residential property that I'm kind of circling around on here. So, the Evergreen has been involved for many years-
Many years, but-
But as far as being the fee title simple owner, that's come over the course of years on the single-family portions, and they're the ground lesssee on the district portions.
Okay, so where the homes are to be built, Evergreen owns that land?
Yes.
Okay. Now, moving to my other list, in this drawing of the streets, are there any roundabouts in this subdivision?
Uh-
I didn't see any.
No, it couldn't be.
Yes, and I appreciate your sensitivity to roundabouts. This, for example, would be a roundabout. This is a roundabout. Kelly, am I missing any? Those are the two.
Historically, I've always been a no vote on roundabouts, because I personally do not want them. I don't like them. The residents don't like them, and I'm really sorry they're there, but you probably don't have any other way to get in and out of there.
Well, um-
And that might be different.
Going back to the vice mayor's question of the fire department representative about multiple points of access and so on, again, this overall residential development actually has four points of access, and one of them is coming in here-
And that's off of Pebble Creek Parkway?
Well, it's Astrea Parkway south of I-10.
Or is it Astrea? Excuse me, okay.
But coming in at the Roosevelt alignment.
All right.
And this traffic needs to split, and it needs to be, we think, needs to be proactively calmed in proximity to what I'm going to call this Central Park area. So that's why through various design-related discussions, it was felt that the best alternative there would be a roundabout. Traffic can split here, like a fire truck, for example, could come in and go north or go south, but as far as normal residential traffic headed toward this Central Park is concerned, we think it's good to get that traffic proactively calmed, and that roundabout, I'm pretty sure satisfies fire department criteria for turnarounds. And we know if, for example, it didn't, we're expecting preliminary plat comments, I believe, Katie, this week or next week. So, we're, if it's not the right geometrics, it will be made to be the right geometrics. So doing some calming before that Central Park. Coming in, again, that's one point of access. A second point of access is coming in here, just north of the Quick Trip that exists. Another one is coming up from Banveron, and then a very secondary, more connect two neighborhoods together, is this north-south connection over here, which was always planned in conjunction with this existing development and the future development here as well.
Okay.
So, that roundabout, I think, makes perfect sense, and I know you're sensitive to roundabouts in the context of the Central Park. This one is kind of a Y configuration. Again, some designers felt that that was a good choice. I, I don't know how to say this, other than I don't know where the votes are. I would hope that if it's so close, it may go up or down based upon a roundabout, we can deal with that, so we don't-
All right, well, let me just ask these other quick questions, so I'm not dragging this thing out all night long. There's no plan for a clubhouse or an HOA office or anything in this development?
Uh, no, not in the sense of, for a single family, there would be a clubhouse and a multifamily someday in its own multifamily development.
So most likely, if this project gets built, it'll probably be managed by an off-site management company?
Uh, there'd be an HOA, and-
And managed-
HOAs oftentimes now-
Are off-site.
-use the professional management companies, yes.
Okay. Another concern I have is on the Bullard Wash side, where the homes will be built, and the security of those homes, because the Bullard Wash, while it's a lovely addition to our city, at night, things go on that you might not necessarily know is going on, and I'm not sure that residents will feel secure and safe with their homes backed up to such a large, open area, that it's very difficult even for police to get in there, because there's no really access except the walk-through or the ride-through, you know, where the horses go through, or whatever it is that goes through. No golf carts, but all that other stuff. So I'm worried about that, but perhaps that can be addressed in other areas. I don't know that those homes are going to have solid fences on the sides or the back of the houses. Are they? Do we know? I mean, I wouldn't buy a house in such an open area like that, because I would be afraid of people just walking in and coming in.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. We did not, typically, in certain open space areas, we will add a stipulation that requires view fencing.
Uh-huh.
We do not have that in the stipulation, and the Centerra Development to the South does not have view fencing.
Doesn't have it either. No, they don't. But they've had issues there because of that, so.
Can I just interject? Do you mind if I just interject something?
Sure.
Tell us the Bullard Wash, you know, that we're going to develop someday, that you can walk beside and bike and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
Won't that be coming down that area?
Mayor, the answer is yes. That's part of the Bullard Wash Trail-
Okay.
...system, and that is improved north of McDowell Road, up close to where the mall is going, and the concept is continue that down south and eventually connect to the Gila River, so it will be improved. That is in our Parks Trails master plan.
Okay, and another question is, you might can answer this, Mr. Bull. What makes Evergreen think that this is the right proposal? What do they know that they need to share with us, that they think this is the best use of the land, this is the only way that land's going to be developed in a timely manner, and it's not going to sit for another 20 years?
Let me answer that, and if others want to supplement it, I would encourage them to do so, because I asked that very same question-
Oh, good.
And I'm sure a variety of staff has asked that question as well, because Evergreen has been very involved in this property for 10 years or so. And when we processed the zoning case here eight or nine years ago, shortly following that, before we fell into the Great Recession, Evergreen was trying to line up various development interests on the freeway frontage and so on and so forth. And it didn't happen, and they told it wouldn't happen because of some of the inability to get back and forth, and we're too far away from the Astrea Parkway frontage to pull multifamily-type traffic through the district to get back there and so on and so forth. So in addition to their, probably 100 years' worth of experience sitting back here in various types of development, be it commercial, multifamily, and horizontal land development as well, Evergreen also went through pre-recession marketing cycles on this property and listened to what they were being told. They also listened closely coming out of the Great Recession to what they were being told by, there's a lot of good land brokers in the valley, but one who's as good as, you know, is as good as they get, is Nate Nathan, who is very proactive in trying to figure out what makes good sense on a piece of land, what will develop, what won't. If I could stand here and say, look, just hang tight, we'll build some form of condos or townhouses here or something in a couple of years, we wouldn't be arguing about this. It's a- It's a matter of Evergreen knows to their bone that that is not going to develop with condos or townhouses or some other form of multifamily. And their broker, who's one of the most optimistic, proactive brokers I've ever worked with, knows that and is insistent upon it. So in that context, Evergreen, from what they have done for 40 years, 21 years, 20 years, and so on and so forth, have a high confidence that this will work. The broker that they're working with has a high confidence that this will work. I was in a meeting with some of the Evergreen folks and a variety of staff, including Katie, what, I don't know, six months or so ago, where we were discussing a variety of alternatives and so on. And trust me, staff didn't just roll over and say, fine, do whatever you want to do here. It was answer a question like you just answered, and why does this make sense? And only this makes sense, and so on. So Evergreen's experience, Evergreen's marketing experience, their knowledge in the marketplace, pre and post-recession, and trying to figure out going forward what will work on this freeway frontage. This, they're confident will work. Their brokers confident it will work. Their noise consultants are confident it will work in the sense of noise mitigation and so on. Including, I specifically asked Tony Sola, who's the peer review noise consultant, whether we would have an issue with noise going up over this wall and landing back in the neighborhood, so to speak. And he was insistent that that would not be a problem. And obviously, every situation can be distinguished. But putting this noise wall as close as we can to the source of the noise, which for cars is primarily tire noise, for trucks, it's other noise as well, but for cars, primarily tire noise. Putting the wall as close as we can to the source of the noise at the appropriate height and having it there before anybody moves in is a really good combination of whether it's belts and suspenders and belt, suspenders, and duct tape, I'm not sure. But some combination of doing everything possible. We also have examples, and I can show them to you, I will, in fact, run forward to them, of where one of the things that we opted to do was to bring forward some examples that we know are successful examples. These happen to be in the East Valley near the 202 and Higley, like in Higley Park and Santan Village in the northern part of Cooley Ranch, all very successful developments.
I've seen them.
You can see, approximate to the freeway. And, you know, they work. And, and it's a similar technique of having houses back up or side onto the freeway with a buffer and trees. I'm pretty darn sure our tree count is higher at having 36-inch box trees, 15-foot-on centers than the tree count of, of what we're looking at in here. But whether it's higher or the same, it, it's a substantial number of trees, so... If anybody back here wants to supplement, supplement what I was saying, Evergreen's looked at it from every direction to try to make sure that this is successful, including, as I mentioned, and as I think Katie mentioned as well, the preliminary plat's in. We're awaiting comments. And that we don't want to dilly-dally around. We're not trying to rush through it. We've been involved a couple of years in it. But we also don't want to miss a marketing window. So preliminary plat's in. Preliminary plat, comments will be coming out within a week or so, we think. Maybe roundabouts would be best discussed in the context of the plat rather than the zoning case. I leave that to you all. I just would hate to see the zoning case go down based upon a roundabout or two.
Okay, thanks. Finished? I'm done, but she can answer.
Thank you, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell. My name's Laura Ortiz with Evergreen, as Ed said. And I won't repeat everything he just explained. But I did want to emphasize that we did start about two years ago with staff on, you know, embarking in this new PAD. We've been in multiple discussions. And the reason why it's taken so long partly is because through that time period, we had three different home builders in escrow to purchase this. So we would work each time with the home builder, work on what that preliminary plat, what the layout would look like, what their concept was. For one, you know, different reason or another, each of the home builders chose not to move forward, largely just due to the continuing cycle of optimism and pessimistic thoughts on the West Valley. But in each time, it was also the time to market. Because we were not, through the new PAD process, we did not have a preliminary plat. There was a lengthy process ahead of them and an uncertainty about what could they build in the end. And so, you know, what we're trying to do today, although it might seem like it's quick to you, we felt like it's a pretty long amount of time we've been spending working with staff and the home builders. Through that process, not only with the three home builders, but with Nate Nathan and with Casey Christiansen, we have cobbled together what we think is the best of every home builder's plan and idea about how to put together the single-family components with a lot of detail and a lot of thought that's gone into it. So we're very comfortable and confident that once we get through both the PAD and the preliminary plat, that then we can market it even more aggressively with certainty to those home builders that know that they just need to come in, do a final plat, and hit, you know, the dirt basically with their tractor so they can start building homes instead of a more uncertain process ahead of them.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Bill?
Counselwoman Stipp.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt and just add one thing to that? I apologize. Not to beat a dead horse, but can I have Elmo? And it just, this isn't in your staff report because it actually just occurred to me with the discussions. But there is another portion of the general plan that I think is worth pointing out. And that is, and it, it points as an example to an existing area we have in North Subdivisions where there's an apartment complex next to Interstate 10. So you can see this was built in the way we encourage, where there's apartments near the interstate and the single families further away from it. But it was actually identified during the general plan process to discourage this type of development because of the access issue. There were, there are problems, I guess, in the neighborhood with speeding and just different, of the compatibility of these two uses when the apartment is not located on an arterial street. So it actually recommends that apartments be located on an arterial street or have direct access onto an arterial street through a non-single-family residential. The way the current Astrea Common zoning is set up does not meet the standard. They could build it because it's zoned already. But I guess the point I want to say, you know, we, we would still want to look at other types of uses. We still encourage looking at that. But I guess the point I want to make is it is a tough piece of property. It doesn't look like that at first sight because, you know, the Bullard Wash is an amazing amenity. The commercial on Astrea Parkway are really great amenities. But when you start looking at the access constraints, it becomes apparent that it, it really is a tough piece of property. Thank you.
Counselwoman Stipp.
Katie, don't, don't go anywhere. Don't go anywhere. So I guess I'm, I'm going to follow up your, your comments with, you know, this is very similar to the project that we had, where we rezoned a piece of commercial property to, to a multifamily or multi-use about six or eight months ago. And it was driven by the market. The market is changing. And we adapted the zoning from one piece of property to another, and this is essentially no different. So I just, and I think that's kind of what, where you're driving at with, with some of this. So I've got a number of questions. So Katie, I'm going to kind of take these a little bit out of order. Do you know what the existing lot sizes are in Rancho Mirage that back up to this?
Thank you, Councilmember Stipp. The minimum lot size is 50 feet.
So these, and you can't see it because I'm, but I'm looking at a Google map of where we're at. So I'm going to point to it, you know, like you're going to see it. So in this particular development, these 50-foot lots are going to back up to what size?
55-foot lots.
So it backs up to 55, so we're compatible in that. The 70s are the, the 70-foot lots are the next ones above that, there we are.
Oh, thank you, perfect, Lainey.
Okay, so the 70s right above there and then 60 and 50, okay. I, I know we've talked about it a great deal, that it's common practice that the shared wall, HOAs, blah, blah, blah. And it may not necessarily be appropriate in the rezoning as a stipulation. But I'm going to look to you to tell me that. But I sure want, I want to make sure that the shared wall maintenance responsibility, et cetera, is identified somewhere in this process. That, and I think that's in the preliminary plat. But I'm not a planning person, so is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Stipp. Typically, we were, we put those stipulations at preliminary plat. And then before the final plat is recorded, they have to give us a copy of the CCNRs. And that's when we review the CCNRs to make sure what we said was going to be in there is actually in there.
Okay, so it's not appropriate for tonight, but it would be appropriate at preliminary plat?
For the actual detail review, but I, if there is something you want to require, you want to add a stipulation at zoning.
About the shared wall. That, that's what I would like to see. I don't know how everybody else feels, but in the preliminary plat, that discussion, I think we've got to have it addressed. And if it's standard, then it shouldn't be an issue. If it's not, if it's not standard and it is an issue, then I guess we don't preliminary plat the project. But from a zoning perspective, it doesn't affect it. But I'm just making that observation while you're there.
I, I, thank you, Councilmember Stipp. I feel confident that we would be able to address that at preliminary plat and bring you that information and have it as a stipulation of preliminary plat approval.
Okay, then my, my next concern is about all of these roads that come out onto Van Buren, exiting this property in Rancho Mirage. We've got 151st Avenue, 152nd Avenue, this new roadway coming out just to the west of it. There's three roads within like a quarter mile of one another. The one at 151st and the one at 152nd allows you both eastbound and westbound travel on Van Buren. Which, to me, this has got the makings of the next most dangerous intersection in the city of Goodyear. That's a lot of houses that are going to, if they're going to want to go eastbound on Van Buren, this is going to be the way they're going to do it. So have, have we looked at the traffic pattern, the study on this? How does this, how does this affect us? And is there a proposed traffic light at either 151st or 152nd to alleviate the potential traffic issue?
Thank you, Councilmember Stipp. I can't answer all the details about the proposed traffic light. With the preliminary plat, we did request an updated traffic study. And we just received that, and that's, you know, Mr. Bull alluded to that comments are forthcoming. So we haven't had a chance to gather internally to discuss what that updated traffic report said. But that's exactly why we requested an updated one from the one that was originally part of the zoning, so we can look at those issues.
So if this goes forward tonight, that'll be a preliminary plat discussion?
Yes.
Okay. And then my final que, final question is actually about the sound wall configuration. I was very surprised to see wings on the side wall, on the sound wall, rather. I know through the discussions we've had with ADOT regarding sound walls, they require sound walls to extend, I think the number was 400 feet beyond the end of wherever the quote-unquote "sound" was coming from, to keep it from, from coming through. I'm more concerned about it from a separation perspective on the west side of the property than I am on the east side. But I don't know that that's the appropriate way to mitigate the sound. If it's not the more appropriate to mitigate that sound going farther east or farther west from, you know, straight-line perspective. And again, I'm not a sound wall engineer, but we don't have that anywhere else in the city. All of the sound walls are straight, and...
We do have it, we do have it because I had a, excuse me for interrupting you, Bill, because I had someone come to me and say that they had the wing wall, and it did change the sound.
Okay.
Okay, so I know they did put, I know that somewhere in the city, we've got some wing walls.
Okay. I'm just, just raising it as a concern. Again, it does not under affect, it does not affect the underlying zoning. But it, that was new information tonight that I, I'm very hypersensitive now to the sound issues. And if, and very honestly, I don't really care who the quality or what the quality of the sound engineers that Evergreen's using. If this doesn't pass ADOT's standard, we are all going to suffer years and years for whatever sound comes out of this freeway. So I really want to make sure that wherever that's appropriate, that we are really engaging the people, the final decision-makers from ADOT on the, the sound wall issue. Other than that, I have no other concerns. You know, we're, we're responding to the changing conditions of the market. People are going to intentionally purchase a home there. They're going to know that they're buying a house up against the freeway. If they, if those last two blocks never get built, they're never going to get built because no one's going to want to buy in the freeway. But if they do, then those folks knew what they got when they bought there. And it could be, my daughter and her, whoever her first husband is, may purchase a starter home there.
You said first husband, you were planning on the second?
Did I say first husband? Well...
Bill!
Well, technically, any marriage is the first marriage, right? Let me introduce you to my future ex-wife. She has, she has to have her first boyfriend first, so we got to get through that, I guess, but... And sorry, Erin, if you're listening to this. But, you know, that's a great place for a starter home, and that may be what, what the, what the, the area brings. So other than, than these concerns that I've already addressed, which I think come up at preliminary plat rather than, than this tonight, the only other observation, I guess, I really kind of want to make very generically is about the procedure this evening. We had residents that came up to speak that had only three minutes to talk. But we, again, give the applicant a half an hour to give a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, that we're not even privy to before the, before the, the situation. And that seriously concerns me. And I really hope that as a staff, we're going to fix that problem or we're going to get some better legal advice on this because we've addressed it once, and it's completely unfair to our residents that they have to stand there with a three-minute buzzer and our applicants get to come here and give an entire PowerPoint presentation. I, I think we're, we're working for the wrong people at that point.
Are you done? Okay, well, oh, Cheryl Lynn. Counselwoman Holman, sorry.
I answered by either name. Katie, I want to make sure I understood one of your statements. And that was that there, that because of the walls and the way it was set up, that there were no recommended, recommended further noise mitigations being required of the houses as they're built? Did I understand that statement?
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. There is a stipulation about the construction of the homes. And it's consistent with what's in the zoning ordinance regarding residential that's near interstates. And that is, sorry, I don't, I'm looking for it. Oh, yeah, we, it requires two-by-six construction and an R-value of 19. And so it's, it's repeating what's in the zoning ordinance. So the house construction has to be different. And then the stipulations repeat what's being shown about the buffer, the sound wall, and the trees.
And I am one of those people that you live in the neighborhood in the northern subdivisions. So I know what it's like to live close to the freeway. And I was there pre and post rubberizing, and rubberizing does make a difference. But whatever requirements that were made inside my house, it was, is so good that I could not hear housing construction going on. And I was the first home in my particular section that was open. So I do know that they work, and I just wanted to clarify what you had said. Thank you.
Great, well, a lot has been said tonight. I really appreciate, first of all, council really vetting this out and expressing your feelings on this. And you had some really good questions. I'm very positive on this. I'm, I'm so glad to see that they have made the adjustments to the market. And I've seen this coming, and I had the privilege of sitting down with Nate Nathan and visiting with him some time ago about the West Valley. I approached him because of, of his, his knowledge of the West Valley and the land requirements that he has in, in the West Valley. And so I can see from our conversation that we had that this is definitely the right direction to go in. And so many of us, when we look at housing, we get very personal about it. And we, our personal feelings come out about, well, I wouldn't do this, and I wouldn't live there, and I wouldn't do that. And we just have to have a blank slate here and look at this very piecemeal and making sure that it's what's good for the city at the time that this is being built. And I think this is really good, and I think your change that you've made is a positive one. And I, and I really appreciate your tenacity to sticking with it, okay? We've all gone through some terrible times in the housing market and with the downturn. And so for... and so for you to come in at this time, when we're still sort of, still recovering to present this, I, I appreciate it. And I'm depending that it's going to be quality builders, and that's the other thing. I know the difficulty has been also getting builders to come in, because many of them were affected by the downturn, and so financially, they're still struggling. So I know this was a feat for you to do this. I think that you know the quality of our city, and you know what we really want it to continue to look like. And so I do trust you and your name and your reputation that this development will be built in that respect. I understand, Bill, your concern about the traffic, and, and it's not just this development, it's several developments, but we'll have to work with it, and council will have to be attuned when we get complaints and to know when that traffic study needs to be redone again, and that light needs to go up. That's part of our job. Now to Serena Denning, and I see you're still here tonight. I appreciate you coming up tonight. I will tell you, if, I mean, I sold real estate and new home developments, and the idea that you have a green space right behind your house in that space, that's quite positive. When people say that this is going to lessen the value of your home by this development being behind it, I don't think that. I think it's going to increase the value of your property. It opens up a lot of different activity going around in this area. So I, I feel confident in looking at this, that where your house is located, it's not a detriment to you and your family. On the double wall, I can tell you, in Pebble Creek, I was on the architectural committee for several year, four years, and somehow, there were some double walls built between homes. What a disaster. I can't even begin to tell you what was behind those walls. And trying to mow the law, to clean it up, it absolutely does not work. So really, for your protection, a single wall is going to be more advantageous for you than a double wall. So again, of course, everybody has to be a good neighbor, and no matter where you live, wherever you go, you never know what your neighbors are going to be. But with the, having a strong, whatever organization they're going to form besides the HOA and the apartments, I, I think the outcome will be good, and I think it's going to be a, a real attraction to the city. So again, I appreciate everybody coming forth tonight, and so I think we're about ready to take a vote on this. So I think what I'd like to do, though, I think I'd like to do a roll call vote, because I'm really not too sure what's going to go on, so if I could please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Me? Yeah. Oh, I. Sorry.
Could you say that? I don't think we heard you.
Mayor, I'm voting aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Stipp?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Nay.
Councilmember Osborne?
Nay.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes five-two.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a break, all right? So let's see, is 10 enough, or do you need 15?
10's good.
10's good, all right, so 10, 10-minute break. All right. Just stand up.
Item is 7.4, is to consider approving the fiscal year 16 annual public art plant. What did I miss?
Taco Bell.
Taco Bell, oh my, I'm sorry, Taco Bell!
Nice try.
All right, we're going to...
You said about that?
Boy, didn't I do that? You know, it's funny, I crossed it off. See, it must be something here. Okay. 7.3, to consider the use permit for a convenience use Taco Bell through at Mountain Ranch Marketplace.
Thank you, Mayor. Mountain Ranch Marketplace is located at the northwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Elliott Road. Taco Bell would be just to the west of the entrance drive off of Elliott Road, circled there in red. Kitchell Development will be creating a half-acre development-ready parcel for Taco Bell to build on, and that's McDonald's on the east side of the drive when it was under construction. Restaurants are allowed by right in the C2 general commercial zoning district, which is the underlying zoning of the marketplace. Taco Bell is in the public process to obtain a use permit for the drive-through, which goes around the back and the side of the building. The public process has included an HOA email blast to the residents, from which we received several emails, most of them against a Taco Bell in Estrella. Notification was mailed to surrounding property owners within 500 feet. There were two public notices in the newspaper. A neighborhood meeting was held at Star Point, and about 14 residents attended that meeting. Again, most of the objections were against Taco Bell in Estrella. There was a sign posting on the property regarding P&amp;Z and council meetings, and there was a March 18th public hearing before the P&amp;Z, and no one attended from the, the community. Taco Bell has altered their prototype restaurant to provide elevations that are in keeping with the other commercial pads in the inline center. In addition to the materials and colors used, they have incorporated the trellis element from the Walgreens entry walkways and the McDonald's drive-through into their own drive-through. Staff has determined that the application meets the required findings for the issuance of a use permit for the convenience use of a drive-through and has recommended approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission concurred, and by a vote of seven to zero, recommended that the council approve the use permit with the stipulations in your staff report. After any questions you may have of me, the architect is also here to make a presentation and answer questions before you go to the public.
Thank you. Would anybody in the audience like to speak, or do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then could I please have a motion, a second, to approve a request for the use permit to allow a convenience use Taco Bell drive-through at Mountain Ranch Marketplace, located at northwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Elliott Road within the Estrella Phase One Plan Area Development Zoning District, subject to stipulation. So you hear a motion?
So move, second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne, and a second from Councilman Campbell. Open.
Switch it.
All right, I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell, and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor.
Could you go back a slide? I'm trying to look at the flow-through. Again, I'm not as familiar exactly. When they're coming out, how do they actually, can they, can they get out of there going either left or right, or is there only one direction they can take on the flow of the traffic? I don't know if this shows it very clearly.
Where do I?
The aerial's better? Go back to the aerial, and let's see if...
Well, see, that site is going to be reworked somewhat to create the parcel for Taco Bell. So right now...
Can you kind of point where you think the direction itself, with the, yeah?
They will come in here, off of Elliott Road, and there will be an entrance drive in here. They'll go around the building, through the drive-through, and come back out that same drive.
All right, can they make a left or right there, or?
Just a right. Just a right?
Just a right.
Coming out onto Elliott, just a right.
They can only make a right, so if they've got to go in the other direction, where do they turn it around, or they're going to make a U-turn?
Typically, what most people do, and it occurs now, when they're coming out of the Safeway, coming down this way, they'll go up this way, which will continue on and take them to a drive that goes out onto Estrella Parkway.
You're talking about following all the way out to where Walgreens is, and then make that right, to catch that light to make a left or a right?
Yep, or, you know, I suppose, I suppose they could do this and come out onto San Gabriel, they could do that.
They could do that.
But to get to the lighted intersection on the strip.
They'd have to go all the way through that way.
Right.
Have you noticed, is, is that flow-through, or engineering has any concerns about?
We, we have reviewed it through engineering, we have reviewed it through our traffic engineering department. They do not anticipate any problems, and quite frankly, we, we did some research into, had there been accidents in the area? And no, most of the accidents occur up at Elliott and Estrella at that lighted intersection. There haven't been any, any right here at the center.
The only, the only reason why I ask is, when I'm up there, I usually end up, depending on where I am, is taking that road either to where the safe, where, what is it?
Safe.
The Safeway, all the way over to, to Walgreens, or down below, all the way over to Walgreens, because it's much safer getting out at the light, because you can go left or right there, than try to get across one of these streets where there is no light, so.
I agree.
Okay.
Councilman Lortano?
Yeah.
I'm going to give hers, no, go ahead, Councilman Lortano.
I, I do have a couple of questions, and then I've kind of got, I've got lots of questions, okay? You knew that, huh? Have we contacted Odyssey and saw, and talked to them? Because that, right by that area is where, right now, they drop off their kids with their buses, and they do the pickups in the morning. Have we contacted them yet?
I contacted the school that is there in the center and spoke to them. They talked to me about Odyssey, and because Odyssey is not located there as, as one of the property owners, I contacted Rob Schramm of Kitchell Development, who spoke to Odyssey. And he's here in the audience tonight and can, can respond to that question.
Could we find out what their concerns are, and then I'll have a couple more questions?
Go ahead, Sheri.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was just explaining to the vice mayor. A lot of people don't know, Odyssey brings their buses. They're not located up in Estrella, but they pick up a lot of kids there, and they drop them off. So about 3:00 in the afternoon, there's about four or five buses, and same thing about 7:00 in the morning, and they're usually kind of lined up right around by the bagel shop in this area here right now. So I, did you talk to them, and what'd they say?
Rob Schramm with Kitchell Development Company. I was not aware, I've never heard of Odyssey until we had our neighborhood meeting. And then I, after our neighborhood meeting, there was a concern about the speed of traffic from Safeway to the San Gabriel exit that had been brought up by Phoenix Children's Academy. So I went and met with the manager, it's the first time I've heard of it, or our property management group has heard of it. We spoke with them about that, that traffic and those patterns. We immediately installed speed bumps, so there's two new speed bumps and a stop sign in front of the Phoenix Children's Academy, so we took that action right away. I also asked them about Odyssey. They said that their, their Odyssey kids are picked up by a Phoenix Children's Academy bus that goes to Odyssey, and I have never been aware of this school or ever heard of it before I spoke with you. And from what I understand is Odyssey actually uses our center without permission to pick up and drop people off. So they come into our parking lot and pick kids up and drop them off. So it's the first we ever heard of it, so I did not feel it was my responsibility to reach out to Odyssey. I actually need to talk with them about that liability of dropping off and picking up, and hopefully we can work with them and, and come up with something that is safe for everybody and also meets our insurance requirements as a developer and owner.
Yeah, you, I, I would suggest that, because a lot of the parents who live up there that are homeowners send their kids to Odyssey. There's a lot of kids coming and going about twice a day. I mean, if you've been up there and you see the buses, there's a lot of young kids coming and going.
Never knew that.
And I, I brought it, we talked at the meeting about that, and I do appreciate the speed bumps, because I brought up that, too. One of my concerns is about the traffic flow. People aren't going to drive over to the light at Walgreens to get out. They're going to hang a U-turn there. And what's really interesting about this is when you look where San Gabriel, there's a car on the aerial map here, this is where we're going to put the lighted crosswalk that I've said, I really, if you look at the curvature of the road, it, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. And literally, within days after we had that meeting, I was at a school function, one of our children's moms was in an accident. She wasn't hurt, but she was in an accident, and it's exactly what I've told you the problem is. It's, someone made a left, she was going on Elliott, someone made a left, tried to beat the traffic, because it kind of comes up at an angle, ran right into her, knocked her into the Star Point area. Great, great things to say about our police and fire. She was bruised up a lot, and the cars don't look that great, but that is my concern, is that we're putting in more drive-throughs, I guess, here with the traffic flow than we have at the Safeway down the hill. So I really, that is, that is a big concern, and I know I've heard we've done a traffic study. What's our plan if we start to see a lot of people hang U-turns? What are we going to do? What's our plan?
I don't have an answer for that. I can tell you that this, this center was designed with, you know, a traffic study and traffic engineering in mind, and it's been approved by the city of Goodyear. And I don't know how to answer that. I mean, we haven't had that issue with McDonald's making U-turns, or at least it hasn't been brought to our attention. The building that, the Taco Bell will be replacing a six, or a 7,000-square-foot shop building that would have been put parallel to Elliott Road, so in terms of traffic impact, it's going to be exactly the same as if we built that 7,000-square-foot shop building with quick-serve restaurants and other uses.
I, I guess that with McDonald's, you already have people who come out by the center, and that's what I pointed out to you before, that is the traffic flow, that people come out by the bagel store, go over there, and then make a left, and then go either right or left on San Gabriel. I mean, that, that is the traffic flow. They're not cutting out to go left that way, to go over by the homes by West Star, so that, that is a concern that I, I do have, that it's, it's going to get worse, and I don't know if we have a plan in place.
What, what was the flasher? What was it? We had a discussion.
Pedestrians.
Yeah, can we talk about that?
Mayor Lord, Councilman Lortano, yeah, we, we do plan on...
You have to speak up, please.
We, we, we do, we're pursuing funding through this supplemental process to install the flashing crosswalks. It'd be a push-button activated crosswalk, and I guess first, like that, the warrant that's met at this time would be the pedestrians to, to require some additional notification warning of pedestrians. So we would, it would be a push-button activated crosswalk where you would have a, in the median, and on the side of the street, you'd have a flashing devices that have a strobe flash whenever pedestrians are crossing. And as far as the traffic volumes and the traffic concerns goes, we would, as, as Karen mentioned, there, there, I know we had the crash the other day, and we've had, in a three-year period, a couple of other crashes over a few years, so it's been a low, a low number of crashes for that type of intersection over a several-year period, but we certainly will continue to monitor it actively. There's no signal warranted at this time, but we are working to get this, in the CIP, this funding to install a warranted signal during the year, so that you wouldn't have to, like, wait another full budget year in order to install a warranted signal. You have the funding there, you can move forward pretty quickly if, if it was determined during any particular budget year to be warranted.
Okay, yeah, and I appreciate that. I appreciate what we've done, it's just, I just want to know, like, what is our plan if we find out the traffic isn't working like we're supposed to? And that is a concern a lot of people have.
So you're saying that you're, you're looking at it to set some sight, some funds in order to go ahead and put up a light?
No, no, not a light, just the walkway.
The walkway, the walkway.
Mayor Lord, Councilman Lortano, the, the flashing device would certainly be the, the first thing installed, but when budget gave their CIP presentation, one of the items in there was that, like, $500,000 for a traffic signal, like, that became warranted during the year, so we would certainly keep monitoring it, and that would be an option during, during the fiscal year to move forward if it was needed.
Bill? Sheri, he wanted, I think he has his...
I just, I want to follow up on this one issue. So I'm going to say this out loud, just so you hear what we just said. We're going to spend money on the flashers for the, for the intersection, for the crosswalk, and then we're going to put in a traffic light. Is that what, that's, that's what we're saying. We're going to spend 100 and some thousand dollars for the flashing system.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stipp, it's, it's like a, maybe a $25 application that they, that could then, if, even be put somewhere else in the city if it was needed. It's not a, like a...
So it's not an engineered product?
Correct. It, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a product, it's recommended by the FHWA, so it's got that backing.
Right. Right.
But it's relatively inexpensive in order to meet a need that we have in a situation like this, where we do have, right now, about 25 pedestrians during the highest hour, which certainly could go up some with the Taco Bell accessing Star Point.
Okay, so at least you've alleviated the, we're going to spend money and then we're just going to throw it away and put a traffic. So we've at least addressed that. But the other side of this is, on Estrella Parkway, we insisted that a traffic light be installed when the Walgreens went in. We hadn't had a traffic study, we hadn't done anything else, but a traffic light had to go in over there. And we continue to ignore this particular location, which exits from Star Point, exits from the shopping center, and to fast food restaurants. Have I missed something? And, you know, if we're in the budget process, maybe instead of having a warranted, maybe we just identify this is where the next one's going to go. Is there a reason that we're not doing that? To anybody that can answer that?
Councilmember Stip, we, I guess we certainly could identify this as the next one.
I just assume we made Walgreens pay for it. That's why that one's there, but we don't have anybody to pay for this one. I hate to be argumentative about it, but it just seems to be kind of common sense. Where's Nathan when you need him?
Somebody give him a microphone?
Oh, it's on. I got it. Sorry. What we, what Luke has been describing is, we, our initial response was that the traffic signal warrants weren't met at this point in time. There's a concern that we've heard, that council is very concerned about that intersection. And we, from the engineering staff, we can recommend when a signal is meeting those conditions to meet warrants. Council always has a prerogative to put that in at their direction. So what we need to move this ahead is direction from council to proceed with that. What we're seeing at this point in time, the warrants, the seven warrants, aren't met to require the sign, but it is an elective of council to make that direction for staff.
Okay. Then I guess my follow-up question to that statement is, how did we end up with one from the Walgreens that hadn't even existed yet? It couldn't have been warranted.
Was anybody here? I was here when that was.
Oh, we all were here?
Yeah. Was that, were you?
That one just popped up. I made the, I made the observation that night. We're putting in a traffic light like 200 feet from the intersection.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Stip, there was a warranted, it was done based on the projected, the traffic volumes from the center with the Walgreens development. So it was based on a traffic study that was done by the developer at that time.
And the developer paid for it?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thanks.
What's next? Joe?
No, I was just, Bob, just to follow up. Yeah, I personally, I think if the warrants aren't there, I think we've just got to be careful of putting traffic lights in locations where you don't meet warrants, because then what criteria do we use as we move forward? So from my perspective, if it's warranted, so be it. But if it's not, I just think we've got to be careful by setting those type of precedents. That's just my two cents worth.
Councilman Osborne?
Well, I would like to thank staff for answering some of our concerns and questions over the last couple of months, that when we've been looking at this and proactively looking for crosswalk type of help for this, because we know that people are continuing to move there, and rightfully so. It's a beautiful area. And I think that, you know, the more items that are in the shopping center, the more traffic that it will have. And so it's a nice thing to have to worry about pedestrians walking across the street back and forth. That's a good thing. And for the shopping center, obviously, safety comes first. And I think that, you know, people on this council obviously are concerned about that and want to make sure that everyone's taken care of. For the center itself, you know what? Continuing to add businesses to the center is going to just make it more desirable for the businesses that are in there and causes more economic stimulus to everybody that's in there. And so I'm sure that they'll be happy for more traffic. But thank you.
Councilman Holman?
This is just really a very basic question. What happened to no U-turn signs? You know, that's one of the questions, is how do you stop people from making U-turns at that corner so that they can go east and not have to turn west? I don't believe, at least I've never noticed any no U-turn signs or.
Mayor Lord, Councilman Holman, U-turns are legal in Arizona unless there's like a particular safety reason resulting in not having a U-turn.
But isn't that what we're discussing here?
Certainly could evaluate, I mean.
I just thought that, that sounds very simplistic, but it just would seem to be a way of at least slowing down people from doing it.
Engineering staff can work with PD staff to certainly evaluate, we can, engineering and PD can work together and certainly evaluate the potential for adding a no U-turn sign there. And I guess the benefit, absolutely.
I mean, if that's a, I thought.
You have no argument with me on that, Wes. It does sound like common sense, doesn't it?
Well, I can speak with certainty that they're not there. And if that's what people are doing and that's causing accidents, as Sheri described, then it would seem to me there should be a way to post them that would get people's attention.
Councilman Lortano?
It wasn't the U-turn that caused the accident. I'm just going to say that's going to be another problem. What the problem is, is you have a round street kind of that comes up over a little bit of a grade each way. And there's about two times in the day that it's just horrid to drive. One is like when people are dropping their kids off of school and going down to get to work. And it's hard to get out of San Gabriel. You have to gun it. Same thing if you want to leave the Star Point. You have to gun it if you want to get across it to San Gabriel. You have to step on it to get across because people, maybe they speed, we should say don't speed, but I mean, it's a hard intersection. It's not hard all the time, but there's really some really busy parts of the day that I get really concerned. I think having Taco Bell is a good, a good thing to put another restaurant up there. And I know there's a lot of people in our area that don't like Taco Bell because it's fast food. But my issue, I think that's a great addition because I think it's going to be great, it's going to be more job for teenagers up there. We're very remote. And I think we've had problems keeping businesses up there. There's several businesses that have closed that just can't get legs and stay up there. And that's been a problem. A lot of small biz mom and pop businesses just can't stay in that center. So we do need the density, I would agree with that. But I do have some heartache about how that whole intersection's developed and how this whole thing's coming about. And I guess that's where my heartache is, that I don't see a plan, like I think what the council member Stip was saying about, we put one up at the Walgreens and that doesn't go into a neighborhood. That's just one from out from a shopping center. It's not going into, I think we missed the boat on that one. That light should have gone here, honestly. And as they continue to build houses up there and down other ways, more people are going to be using this to get out on Estrella, because that's our only way out. And I think our remoteness that makes it so beautiful to us also makes it very hard for me to explain to people up here, because I may drive down and I'll drive on McDowell to get things, and I have to pass McDowell. So I'm familiar with those intersections. It's very hard for me to explain some of the traffic flows because a lot of people don't come up unless you have a reason to come up to Estrella. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm really conflicted on this because I'm really concerned. I think Taco Bell would be a very good addition, and I do appreciate the fact, as soon as we talked, you went and dealt with the speed bumps. But I'm just really, really concerned, especially we have more fast food, we've got the Star Point there, summer's coming, kids cross there. We have a lot of kids in the summer that cross on their bikes.
So the temporary light or the flasher, whatever you're calling this for the children to cross?
That might help with that, but I'm still concerned about people just trying to gun it to get out of the Star Point. I'm just, I don't think it was designed well when it went in, or we missed something somewhere, you know? And I don't know how to fix that now.
Well, Mayor?
Yes.
Can we ask the traffic engineer to monitor it after it gets built and, you know, monitor it so that we'll know if we need to take drastic action? I mean, I don't want to cry wolf, but if we need it, we need it. But we need to know we need it.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell, we'll absolutely monitor this one closely with certainly, with the concerns. We'll certainly keep a close eye on it. We'll also look into the no U-turn possibility and then, you know, the flashing crosswalk. But we certainly will monitor this one regularly.
I have a question. So if you put a light there, what does it do to the Star Point, to people coming out of that? Does it back, because you're talking here, right?
Yeah.
And so people coming out of the parking lot, you know, when they have a big events, they're backed up.
Time light, then.
You're going to be really lined up. That's not a huge parking lot.
Yeah, you're lined up anyway, though, because you've got to wait to cross. You can't get across until the traffic breaks anyway.
Oh, well.
It's a time light like the one at Walgreens.
Mayor Lord, council members, we certainly, it would be a light that's activated by traffic. And then if we knew there was a big event at Estrella, we could, you know, increase the green time coming out to help kind of flow traffic out of there, like we do with some other locations for special events and that kind of stuff as well.
Well, I guess the one thing you had, you don't want to wait till someone's killed or a child is hit. So I mean, that's if, if this is a real concern, we need to make a decision here to, you know, prevent, yeah. Councilman Stip?
You know, the underlying issue that we're addressing tonight is the special use permit for Taco Bell, and I don't think this has any impact on the Taco Bell discussion. But ultimately, Mayor, as you just pointed out, it will become a warranted light when a kid is killed there.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a, that's not the right time for us to make a decision when we're all sitting here saying, we know this is going to be a problem. So I think these two issues are separate from one another, and perhaps this is a better CIP discussion than it is anything else. But certainly related to the applicant tonight and the special use permit, I don't know that we've got any bearing on this discussion regarding the traffic light.
Here we are with nobody really wanting solution here.
I want a traffic light, but I also want to vote for the Taco Bell. There we go.
Yeah, well, I think some of us are in that same boat.
And again, just to reiterate, if there's standards that we use, and if there is a problem, I don't have a problem putting a light there, but I think we've got to be careful of putting lights not into standards. And then where do we stop if somebody else in a neighborhood? So we've just got to be careful on why we're putting it in and the justification why it's going.
We've done it before, though. This isn't the first traffic light that will be installed in this city that we've done based on council action.
I'm just saying, it's not a good precedent, that's all.
So Mayor, this.
Yes, Councilman Osborne?
Back to the point of what this is regarding, I would have to say that let's.
Vote on the, vote on the.
Special use, yes.
On the special use permit, so.
And give direction to the managers.
Have another discussion. Okay. So all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so the ayes have it. Now, what can we do here? How can we?
Well, since this isn't on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
I know it's not on the agenda, so I'm asking the lawyer, what can we do here?
I think I may need your direction.
Stop touching it. You really can't discuss it any further this evening, but you can direct it to be brought back in a CIP, for a CIP discussion later.
That's, well, let's do that, okay? And in the meantime, maybe that'll give a little time for, to look into several aspects of this, okay? All right, go to 7.4. Let's consider the fiscal year 16 annual public art plan. Gailene Oslansky, Arts and Culture Coordinator, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Gailene Oslansky, Arts and Culture Coordinator, and with me tonight is Dr. Denise Bates. She's the chairman of the Public Art Subcommittee of the Arts and Culture Commission. Tonight, during Dr. Bates' presentation, she will share art highlights from the fiscal year 15. She will recognize the Arts and Culture Commission and share more about their role in the city, and present the proposed annual public art plan for fiscal year 16, recommended by the Arts and Culture Commission for council approval. At the conclusion of her presentation, I'll be able to answer any questions you may have about this plan and our current public art projects. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bates. Good evening. Let me first start off by giving you some of the highlights of the work that the Arts and Culture Commission has been engaged in over fiscal year 2015. Within the realm of public art, the Goodyear Branch Library Public Art Book Return was designed by Gallery 37, a West Valley Arts Council program that collaborates with Estrella Mountain Community College, as well as some local high school students. To date, the book return has been fabricated and will be installed in conjunction with the aesthetic shade canopies and sculptural seating designed by New Media. Fiscal year 2015 also saw the first appearance of the Goodyear Mobile Museum. The vision of this initiative is to bring the history of Goodyear to the people by having it available at various community events, and it was developed with the support and assistance of Three Rivers Historical Society. Next, the Arts and Culture Commission has held free art exhibits thus far at the Goodyear Library. We have had 38 local artists on display in our first year of shows alone, and we are excited to continue growing the shows and offering our West Valley artists the opportunity to share their work. Now, turning to some of our arts partnerships, the commission has partnered up with the Avondale Elementary School District for the second year to receive funding from the Arizona Commission on the Arts for a strengthening school through arts partnership grant. And it has provided over 500 students with quality art programming in school and after school. Also, the Follow Your Art program began this year as a professional development series for artists. 12 local artists have been participating in the workshops, and as a result, we have seen an increase in local artists' participation in other local art opportunities. And the final highlight I would like to share with you tonight is the Art of Cultures Festival and Expo that occurred this past February, where approximately 1,500 people were in attendance. This long-awaited event provided attendees the opportunity to explore and learn about folk arts, and it proved to be a rich experience for everyone involved. The Arts and Culture Commission actively works to support the arts in Goodyear, and each commissioner is committed to fulfilling our mission. This mission includes demonstrating the value of the arts as a community investment, supporting Goodyear in becoming a performing and visual arts destination in the West Valley, using the arts for greater academic achievement, and growing and developing arts and culture in all aspects of the city. And I'd like to recognize other commissioners who are not joining us, or we had one here earlier today, but I'd like to thank them for all the support and work they've done, because this is, it's a joy to be part of the commission, and yet it is a lot of work and it takes a lot of time and dedication. Cities gain cultural, social, and economic value through public art. It reflects our community's identity. It is a distinguishing part of our public history. It adds meaning to our city by highlighting its unique attributes. Public art humanizes the built environment and invigorates public spaces. It provides everyone in the community with direct and ongoing encounters with art that doesn't have to be isolated to museums or other cultural institutions. In addition to the social and cultural value, public art can also have some economic benefits. And data has shown that cities with an active and dynamic cultural scene are more attractive to its residents and businesses alike. Presently, we have 12 pieces of public artwork in the city of Goodyear, with three ongoing projects in various stages of its completion, and two proposed projects for the fiscal year 16. year 16. The Public and Performing Arts Program of the Goodyear Code of Ordinances identifies the arts as a process to beautify public space, promote economic development, and strengthen the sense of community in the city of Goodyear. Through this ordinance, it states that up to 1% of costs for eligible capital improvement plan projects may be allocated to the public art fund. As part of the ordinance, the Goodyear Arts and Culture Commission will make recommendations to council for each immediate fiscal year and project expenditures for the next five For fiscal year 16, $60,000 is appropriated in accordance with the city budget process and adopted in the capital improvement budget for public art expenditures. The Arts and Culture Commission are recommending to fund two projects. The first is an architecturally-integrated piece to be located at the new Goodyear Police Department as a fallen officer memorial. The Arts and Culture Commission will be directly involved in collaborating with the artists and stakeholders in the process, in the finalizing of the concept, as well as the selection of the final design. And we propose locating it at the site of the proposed community room to optimize the exposure, and so that it will also be visible from the street. And to give you a closer look at where we're talking about, here's the proposed site here. So it'll be right off the street. So that's the first project that we're proposing. The second project that we recommend is a veterans' tribute with a proposed location at the Ballpark Plaza, which, again, will gain a great deal of exposure and involve the Arts and Culture Commission in the artist collaboration process. The $60,000 appropriated for fiscal year 16 will fund both projects. And in addition to offering the community a platform in which to honor our fallen officers as well as veterans, it enables the Arts and Culture Commission to further promote our mission as laid out in the annual public art plan. Thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Gailene for questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Gailene?
Any questions this evening?
Any questions?
None? Thank you.
Any speaker, I know, any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And I gather there's nobody from the audience. Oh, why don't I do it like I'm supposed to do it first, and we'll get this over with, okay? So, no speaker cards, and so could I please have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 16 Annual Public Art Plan as recommended by the Arts and Culture Commission? Do I hear motion?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell, and a second by Councilwoman Laura Tonell. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Laura Tonell.
I just had a quick question. How long does the process take that we'll actually see those memorials for the veterans and the officers?
For the veterans' memorial, our goal is to have that dedicated at the November 11th Veterans Event that we're planning at the Ballpark.
For this year?
For this year. So this, this project will go very quickly so that that can be completed and dedicated at that event.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Campbell.
Well, Gailene, first, I'd like to thank Dr. Prince for the wonderful mobile, Goodyear Mobile Museum. I was so thrilled to see it. I had seen some of those pictures in the Goodyear book, but I didn't realize the significance of all of them. And I want to thank you for offering to set it up and doing such a wonderful job. And I have expressed my excitement to our city manager that I'm hopeful that we will be able to have this mobile museum on display at every city event. And I do know that you can't be the only person to man it, so I'm offering to help solicit volunteers from my groups that I'm involved in to see if we can help do that, because your Commissioners can only do it so many times. But it's such an important part of Goodyear, and it really tells our story. And I know you're going to keep adding to it, and I want to thank you for that. And Gailene, this is so exciting, and you have really changed our, our arts and commission outlook, what you do, how you do it, the relevance of everything that is so well thought of and planned, and we just want to thank you, because you really have changed how Goodyear portrays our interest in the art. And I just want to thank you, because I know it's a tremendous job, and sometimes it's very hard to pull all of the partnerships together, but you've just done a wonderful job, and I just want to thank you on behalf of all of us.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
Councilmember Stip?
I just want to make sure what we are voting on tonight is just the fiscal year appropriation. Is that correct?
Yes, fiscal year 16.
The, the purpose statement on the agenda talks about the adopted FY 15 to '24 Capital Improvement Program, which identifies public art expenditures of $60,000 for FY 16. And there's a $60,000, I think, placeholder for every single year. Is that correct?
There is. As part of the ordinance, we are to present an annual public art plan for the next fiscal year, but also share for the next five fiscal years what those expenditures look like.
Okay, so from a budget perspective, those are simply placeholders. Is that correct, Larry? Or somebody?
Mayor, Councilmember Stip, if I may, the appropriations are done through the budget process. This is a plan of how they plan to use those funds for next year, but so you're not actually approving the budget tonight, you're approving the plan. So, yes, that's where we're at tonight.
Okay. What I guess I'm trying to make sure we avoid is, by this action tonight, that we're not also authorizing the '15 through '24 budget year, because a lot of times we'll hear throughout the year, oh, you approved that in the capital improvement plan, and little did we know. So I just want to kind of clarify what it is exactly we're voting on tonight.
Yes, and just to reiterate, this is for next fiscal year.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Osborne?
I just want to say thank you also, and I appreciate the plan. I also have to tell you that those little booklets that you had put together that showed all the different art within Goodyear was fabulous, and I hope that you keep that in your budget that, you know, somewhere in another year or two, because you'll have a couple more items to add to, to the picture catalog. I really thought those were really, really neat. So keep up the good work. We appreciate everything you're doing. Thanks.
Anybody else here? No, I just also want to thank you, and I've been in when the Commission was in there and having meetings, and they're really a dedicated group. And I really appreciate that, because it does take hours to make some of those decisions and lots of observations and, and research, deciding what you want to have and what you want to propose. So it really is a lot of work, and I, and I really appreciate it, so. Okay, anything else? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go on to the information items. Council, you have information items to report? It's been a while.
Yeah.
All right. Councilman Osborne?
Well, I have a few things to tell you, but mostly, I do, Gailene and Dr. Bates, I have to tell you, because since we just were discussing the arts, I realized that that three of the four things that I wrote down were arts-related to, to our, to our city. And, you know, this past weekend, I know you had up in Australia, the Lakeside Music Fest, but I was down at the Ballpark with the Flavors of the West, so that was, was really exciting. And also, one of our own artists in Goodyear, actually, he's a sculptor, had his opening, unfortunately, it was in Scottsdale, but he is a Goodyear resident, and I went to his art opening. And then also, I was the emcee for Fashion of the Arts. So that was kind of the last two weeks was, you know, really centered around the arts. I also wanted to say thank you to all of our volunteers. I know a few of us were at the volunteer appreciation night, and, you know, we have great volunteers, and I'm thankful for that. But I also would like to really thank, lastly, everyone that has been a part for the last few years of building blocks. And, you know, staff comes in, and there's about an hour's time where they give about a 10-minute, you know, quick little discussion on what's going in, but really, the relationships that occur because of that, face-to-face contact with our principals and our superintendents, I think, have really garnered strength with what occurs in our schools. And, and I know that a few of you, over the years, really have not known what's gone on there. And so I just wanted to kind of give you a quick little brief that this is something that started six years ago, and I just said, you know what? As a community, education is important. We all agree that education is something that is an economic driver, and really, at the end of the day, the biggest thing is that we all know that we want the best future for our children and for the workforce that we have for the businesses that are going to be here. And, and I just started going out and talking to every principal of every Goodyear school, every superintendent of every Goodyear, you know, district, and brought them all together. And then the heat of the recession, one of the outcomes that was happening was that the families were going to their schools, looking, you know, schools or churches, looking for referrals, resources, something during that terrible time. We didn't know, some of these schools didn't know where to send people. And the city got together and put a quick referral guide for all these principals that were straight there at the front office to help people, you know? That was right here in our community. Something else that occurred was that when Chief Guyer first came on board, this was his first opportunity that he was able to meet the principals of our schools, and he was able to meet the superintendents. And lo and behold, within a month or two after that, the terrible Sandy Hook situation occurred, and the principal, Mabel Pageant, was able to go. She felt confident of calling our chief, and they were able to bring those, that substation to their school. And then Chief Guyer went on and brought it into Central Goodyear and, and South Goodyear. I mean, it's about relationships. We became a read-on city because we had a reading challenge that came out of building blocks. We also, before, I think it was probably just you and I, but the National League of Cities, we as a council, probably seven years ago, adopted the platform of strengthening families, youth, and education. This is all-encompassing of it. Everything that the Mayor's Art does, everything that, Gailene, that you do with the schools, it's all a part of just collaborations with our schools. And on the front page of the West Valley View this last week, Avondale, the city of Avondale, said, "We want the best for our schools." Well, you know what? I think we all do, and I, my hat's off to them for publicly saying it. That doesn't mean that our city is out funneling out money, but if we can be the facilitator to bring people together, to cause those relationships, to say, hey, you know what? We're all in this together to bring the best education for our children, then so be it. And I'm proud that we're doing that. And so I just wanted to kind of let you know about that. Now, this last building blocks, SciTech Festival organization came to us, and a great many, and I don't know how many it was, signed up, because they all want to come together in our city to have a different SciTech festival situations. And also, Christina LaPlante of our Neighborhood Services gave a presentation, and she's trying to collaborate the city and Neighborhood Services and our faith-based community and the schools to bring them all together to help with mentorships, volunteering, and that's what it's about. It's collaborations. It's relationship building. And so I just wanted, I know that you guys don't always get to hear what's going on, and so there's questions that are being asked, and so I just wanted to let you know that these are some of the strong things that have come out of this one-time-a-year type of situation that, Sherilyn was there, I know that, you know, you can attest to what you saw, and, and I'm just appreciative of it continuing on. Thank you. Sorry that took so long.
That's all right.
It was the first time we actually got to talk since then.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Campbell?
Well, I just, I'm not going to report on where all I've been, because I've been a lot of places.
You have.
Yes, I've been very, very busy, but that's, I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing. But I have to thank Crew 121 from the Goodyear Fire Department. I was so proud of them this morning. While I was stuck on Interstate 10 for 35 minutes and not moving, they were taking care of many, many patients in a multi-car accident that was, to me, it looked horrendous. But I was so proud when I saw our truck whipping by the carpool lane as I was stopped, and I said, oh, my gosh, there goes 121. And they were able to get across and get on the other side of the road, but I understand that the traffic was held up a little over an hour.
What crossroads?
It was just this side of where 101 takes off of 10, and I was at the sign that said Tolason for 35 minutes until I moved, because I was to be downtown at 9:00 for the nursing home board, and I left the house at 5:00 of 8:00, and I got there at 9:20. So, but I'm, I want to thank that crew, because I know they really had to work very hard, because it looked like a lot of people had been injured, a lot of automobiles were scattered everywhere. So thank, would you thank them for us?
Councilwoman Laura Tonell?
I was at the Lakeside Festival, and it was beautiful, and it was wonderful, and I was there when you presented the entries, some of the entries of the kids. It was so great to see all that. So you did a wonderful job. The museum, I saw it as well, and it was wonderfully done. If you ever need volunteers, we've got lots of national junior high, just let us know. Get the word out, we can get you volunteers. That's not a problem. You just let us know. I wasn't able to hit the volunteer appreciation, because we had the science fair downtown. There were several of our local kids. I have to brag on, my son was one of them that made the state. But if you remember, Emma Barber for the grade school division in chemistry, she won second place in the state. So I have to let you guys know that on freezer burn, a very exciting experiment on freezer burn. So she got second in the state for chemistry. And then the Science Olympiad team in Australia got second in the state again this year. I think they just lost to Basis Scottsdale again.
Oh, darn. Wonderful.
So we got a lot of science going on there, and we got a lot of STEM, so I think there's a lot to thank for things.
Great. Any others? Yes, Councilman Holman.
You know, I want to comment on building blocks, because I owe Joanne this. When I had said I would go, because I'm all about collaborations and I really am strongly interested in education, and the day before the event, or the weekend before the event, Joanne described the event to me, and I said, well, I'm going to go, Joanne, but it sounds to me a bit like paint drying. And I had to apologize to her for that statement, because it was fascinating, and there is nothing more exciting than to see people dedicated to their corner of the world and their expertise to make it grow and, and stronger, which is what the group of educators in that room did. And I was so pleased. I thought Joanne organized the morning well in that, yes, we had an hour of our Goodyear staff talking about what they did and their current projects that were pertaining to education. And, but it definitely presented a strong Goodyear that was willing to help the schools, and I was very proud of that, and it showed in the, in the building that was going right there before that. And of course, we all know that's what I spent the last 30 days, or 30 years on, is building collaborations and making things happen by getting the right people in the room. So I thought it was a wonderful exercise, and I would hate to see that not continued. And then I also wanted to, I was unable to go to the volunteer recognition event for the second year, because for the second year, it was on a meeting of CDAC. And in spring, those, the funding for the CBG money, which is what this group does, this is our funding cycle. And so to be sure that our, our project is still in the program and that we can still, that we still defend it, and I don't know if Katie is still here, she's absolutely amazing with her knowledge of that whole process. I had to choose to go. It wasn't where I wanted to be necessarily, but it was the right place to be. So I congratulate all the volunteers and thank them myself, thank them for myself, since I wasn't able to do to it last Wednesday.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? No? Well, just quickly, a volunteer appreciation night was well-done, well-organized. I sent letter on to the department, because I just thought it was, it moved quickly, but everybody was able to have enough time to appreciate their awards, and I thought the way they did the pictures, the photos, and all ran very well. And again, I just, I went to, I was in a parade this week called Stand Up for Transportation for Mayor Stanton, where they closed a couple streets off, and they had a ceremony afterwards, you know, getting people to join together for Congress to do something about transportation and funding, so. Other than that, anything else? I'm going to turn it over to you, Brian.
Yes, Mayor, Council, just hit a couple of points. One is, it was brought up about the volunteer awards, it was our eth annual. And just, I think it's great if the public's still listening. We had about 275 people in attendance, so that was terrific. We recognized several service awards, bronze 200 to 249 hours, silver 250 to 499 volunteer hours, and finally, gold 500 to 3999. And it's important to note that when someone hits 4,000 hours, that's called a lifetime achievement status. We have one recipient of that, PJ Miller. We have a couple other volunteers that are overachievers that are knocking on that door. That's pretty phenomenal. But just April 2014 through March 2015 volunteers, and you've seen the number, 28,830 hours, which equates to about $648,000 in savings. So it did move fast. Tremendous shout-out to staff that worked very hard, and then especially recognize our volunteers and appreciate the council for those, it was a busy time, and for those that were able to be there. Goodyear Lakeside Music Fest was already brought up, got some numbers, nine hours of continuous music with 13 bands on two stages. The estimates are 6,500 guests, which was actually an increase over last year, which was estimated at 5,000. And Mayor Lord, you recognize as far as working with mayor select art contests and speaking as well, but certainly council's participation there. We had another event, while not a city event, it was at the Ballpark, and it was the West Valley Mavericks that were doing Flavors of the West, and 3,000 attendance throughout the day, 26 restaurants. For those that like beer, we had 30 different beers available for sale, five farm, local farm growers, four bands, and the benefits were Phoenix Children's Hospital and the Honey Foundation. So a lot of activity this weekend, and, you know, Mayor, that's what I have as far as communications. I will have a few, we have a few follow-up items that were talked about with some of our citizenry, and we will be following up. We'll keep council informed as well.
I just want to add, Gailene, that was a great job, and your committee. I didn't say that, but it was well-organized, and I, everybody seemed to be having a great time, and it was fenced off a little bit differently than before. I thought that worked really well. So again, thank you and your team for that, okay? Okay, the next meeting is going to be on the 20th. It'll be a work session at 5:00. Any other questions? Any other concerns?